Good evening and welcome to the April 15, 2024 meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Vice Chair Jennifer Schindler, and I thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body, that's the city council, we are a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals on public and private lands for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission reviews all development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as the recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, environmental reviews, and below-market rate, or BMR, housing agreements associated with those projects. We work closely with the staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for enforcing the zoning ordinances and related policies. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or an interested member of the public, and there will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each specific agenda item, as well as for the general public comment. And with that, I will call roll of the planning commission. Commissioner Barnes.
Good evening, present.
Commissioner Eric.
Present.
Commissioner Farrak.
Here.
Commissioner Riggs does not appear to be here at this moment. Any update?
We have not heard from Commissioner Riggs, but if we just, we can continue with the meeting.
Perfect.
And then if he attends, we'll note for the minutes when he arrives. And we are getting a little bit of an echo, so Mr. Turner is going to kind of come around and check the computers, which one has the audio on, so just hang tight.
Okay, so we know Commissioner Riggs is currently not present. I think I feel like there is Commissioner. Now we'll do it for dramatic effect. Well, we'll come back to him. Commissioner Silverstein.
Present.
I am Vice Chair Schindler, I am present today. Chair Doe is absent today. And we have Commissioner Riggs is present. Excellent. Do we have any further analysis that tells us where the echo is coming from in the chamber?
No, we'll just keep that ear out for it, but I can hear it. Can anyone else hear? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I can hear it. To me, to the dyes, it does sound like it's coming from that direction, perhaps? Is it you? I don't think so. Yes, I can keep talking. I can go back, I can test, I can go back and reread the welcome of everyone here. What we expect is that somebody's monitor is also broadcasting the sound. Is the monitor? We are checking the monitors to identify the source of an echo of the audio in the chamber. Thank you for bearing with us, whether you are joining by Zoom or whether you are present Has the echo improved? Any, excuse me, is there still an echo coming from any of the monitors or any of the speakers? I'm just going to keep talking.
So, Vice Chair Schindler, I think we can definitely hear it, but we'll just try to continue to troubleshoot it as we go. If it's not too problematic for our remote participants, then that can be worked out as we continue the meeting.
Great. Is it possible that it's coming from the AV equipment behind the wall here? Okay, well, we'll continue to troubleshoot. We can certainly proceed. We do have six commissioners present in chambers, which is a quorum. And there we go, I believe we have resolved the audio echo. Thank you very much. Our next agenda item, Agenda Item C, Reports and Announcements. Mr. Prada, are there any reports or announcements this evening?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Schindler and members of the commission. A few updates from staff. So tomorrow evening, the city council at its meeting on the 16th will review and potentially appoint two members to fill our two expiring terms of Commissioners Riggs and Barnes. So there were two applicants, so we do anticipate the two applicants to be the appointees. The council also will be making a proclamation for May as Affordable Housing Month, so we are doing it a little early to promote a few items that are going in May regarding affordable housing, so definitely encourage the planning commission to listen in to that proclamation. And then, at the same being, the council is also considering an agreement with Habitat to transfer $3.5 million for an affordable housing project from a previous mid-pen allocation to Habitat, who will be taking over the project at 555 Pierce Road. The Housing Commission did review and recommend approval of the transfer of funds or funding allocation. Details will be brought back to the council for the actual funding agreement later. And that concludes my reports and announcements. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from commissioners about the announcements? Okay. With that, let's move on to Item D, the public comment portion of our agenda. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. You are not required to provide your name, district, neighborhood, or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. Please know that if you are here tonight to comment on one of our agenda items, you will have a chance to speak when we get to that item in the agenda. So to learn how to participate, I'm going to turn to our clerk for the evening, Mr. Hockleitner, to explain how you can participate.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schindler. During the public comment period, members of the public have an opportunity to share their comments or questions remotely by clicking the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. For those calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad to notify staff you have a comment. If multiple people are speaking from the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your time, and we will make sure that each person gets a chance to speak. For those participating in person, please fill out a comment card located in the back of the room and hand it to me.
Thank you for providing that guidance. We call for any public comment at this time, either via Zoom or by submitting a card, per the instructions.
At the moment, I don't see any hands online, and I don't have any comment cards for public comment.
Thank you. We'll give it just one more minute, just in the event of technical difficulties, which we all experience from time to time.
Still no hands and no comment cards in person.
Thank you. Then I will go ahead and close public comment, and move on to the next section of our agenda, Section E, the consent calendar. On tonight's, in consent, tonight's consent calendar has one item. E1 is approval of the meeting minutes from the March 25th. Oh, I'm sorry. March 2025, March 25, 2024 meeting, our most recent meeting. So that will be what we cover when we get to the consent calendar. Did we have any public comment?
We do have a public comment, yes.
Great, so let me go back to the public comment portion of our agenda and open up the in-person microphone for public comment.
Thanks for your service to our city. I'm a resident of downtown. I'm curious if you could provide a general update on the builder's relief and what it means for our city.
Thank you for your comment. Appreciate the sentiment that many members of our community are interested in this topic. Unfortunately, this is a non-agenda item in our planning commission meeting tonight, and as such, we are unable to comment on the direct, the specific topic. And maybe, perhaps I can ask staff when it is appropriate for, when there will be a, what channels are most appropriate for updates on this topic?
We can, if we can take your information, it sounds like Connor over there has your contact information, so we can reach out and connect with you and provide additional input to answer questions, but this is not, the planning commission cannot respond to the non-agendaist topic tonight. No, but we can't have a dialogue, so.
I'm just glad that we could provide questions for things that weren't on the agenda.
You can definitely provide public comment, but it's a one-way communication, so, but as professional staff, you can provide your contact information, which we have. If you have an email on that, we can reach out, or a phone number, we can answer questions.
Thank you for your comment. Unless there are any further comment cards or hands raised, I will reclose the public comment portion of our agenda. Mr. Hockleitner, are there any further?
I don't see any hands online, and there are no additional comment cards.
Great. Thank you very much. So let's return, please, then to Item E on our agenda tonight, which is the consent calendar. The one item are the meeting minutes from the March 25, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, which was our most recent meeting. Would any commissioners like to pull items from the consent calendar?
Yes, please.
All right. Mr. Riggs would like to, Commissioner Riggs would like to pull this from the consent calendar.
Through the chair, if I could, request of staff. We had a, well, we had a bladed agenda for today, but I did respond last night, and I'm just wondering if staff has any comment regarding the, my addition to the minutes of the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Riggs. The commission may add or modify the minutes. Commissioner Riggs, your recommended inclusion can be provided to the commission. If you want to read it into the record for the consideration of the broader commission, that would be fine.
All right, thank you. I'll do my best to do it from memory. As background, when the representative for Springline presented the project, it was, of course, just for review, for conformance with the requirements of, of the conditions of approval. We did have a discussion regarding the signage, because, for whatever reason, all the signage that has been installed for each and every, I believe, each and every retail location on the first floor is in brown cast letters on a beige background. And I had asked whether that was due to perhaps an interpretation by Springline of our action during the signage meeting, that perhaps they had misunderstood and thought that we were averse to color and style. The applicant said that he wasn't aware of how the signage was generated and would get back to us. I don't know whether there has been anything to get back since, but, so, I would just request that wording be included regarding that exchange, that Commissioner Riggs asked if the brown signage was due to an inferred request by the planning commission, and my comment that we have long sought to enliven El Camino, not tame it, if I can paraphrase So if the commission recalls that and supports that, I offer that up, I offer that up.
Thank you for that additional detail and clarification, Commissioner Riggs. Let's put that into consideration, but before I ask for further discussion or a vote from the commission, I would like to open up this item, E1, to public comment. Mr. Hockleitner, could you please call for public comment on the item E1?
Once again, if you, during public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions remotely by clicking the hand icon on your screen, or if you're calling in, please click star nine on your keypad. If you have, if you are present in the chambers, please bring me a comment card, and we will announce you. And I don't see any hands online.
Thank you. I think we can close public comment on item E1, the meeting minutes from the March 25 meeting. I think we have clarification and additional level of detail from Commissioner Riggs. Are there any further comments, questions, clarifications, or additions from commissioners to be made to the March 25 meeting minutes? Commissioner Farrak.
Seeing no comments or changes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as amended, as proposed amended, amended by Commissioner Riggs, and thank the staff for the quick work, so we could recall the meeting contents much more easily when it was just a few weeks out.
I'll second.
Great, thank you. We have a first and a second for approving the meeting minutes as amended by Commissioner Riggs. Just quickly to staff, were you able to synthesize the sentiment and the detail from Commissioner Riggs adequately? Be comfortable that they can be captured in the meeting minutes?
Yeah, so through Vice Chair Schindler, since I'm asked if I can take this opportunity to just read back the notes that I attempted to summarize based on Commissioner Riggs's recommendation, so in the minutes, there is a statement about the commission discussed residential, commercial occupancy, sales tax guarantee, and wayfinding signage within applicant. Will add a sentence stating roughly to the effect that Commissioner Riggs asked Mr. Snyder, the applicant, questions on the signage color, confirming whether the brown signage was inferred as required from the master sign program review by the planning commission, noting that the city has worked to enliven the, I'll say, frontage. I hadn't gotten to that word yet. Does that work for Commissioner Riggs and the commission?
Yes, thank you, Kyle.
Thank you. And so with that, we have a first and a second. I will go ahead and call the vote on item E1 here. Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so that is six yeses, no opposition, and one commissioner absent. So with that, we will move into the public hearing phase of our meeting. Moving on to Item F1, our first public hearing item. This agenda item addresses a use permit for 341 Linfield Drive. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to demolish an existing single-story, single-family residence and construct a new two-story, single-family residence on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot depth in the R1U, or Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. Determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQA guidelines, Section 15303's Class III exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures. The proposal includes an attached accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, which is a permitted use and not subject to discretionary review. Mr. Hockleitner, are there any updates from staff in addition to the staff report?
Good evening, Vice Chair Schindler, commissioners. There are no updates that I need to provide for the staff report. The applicant and property owner is here to, he will give a short verbal presentation, and he will be available to answer any questions that you have.
Great, thank you. Shall we proceed with the applicant's comments? Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, I'm Justin Salvidpimena, I'm the owner at 341 Linfield Drive. By way of background, I've been living in Menlo Park for over 15 years. Feel very blessed to live in this city. As context for the project, we love the neighborhood around 341 Linfield Drive, but the existing house on the property is over 70 years old and is falling apart, so we're willing to invest the capital required to build a new home on the property. The city staff have been very helpful throughout the planning phase, throughout, which we really appreciate in terms of providing very responsive and clear guidance. We intend to occupy the house as our residence after the construction is complete. Our household is comprised of my wife, our five-year-old son, our three-year-old daughter, and myself. So thank you for considering our proposal.
Thank you for being here this evening. Before we move into public comment for this agenda item, at this time, I'd like to ask if commissioners have any clarifying questions about this agenda item. Commissioner Riggs.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, if I could just verify with staff, am I correct that the required lot depth for conforming lot is 100 feet in this case?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
I have a clarifying question.
Commissioner Silverstein.
On a very similar line of questioning, when looking at the property map, I see that it was outlined that the property line vertically, this is, I'm specifically looking at sheet number A-1.1. The property line is 100 feet deep, and it seems to be 96.31 feet wide. I recognize that around the corner of Linfield Drive and Linfield Place, there's a curve there, and my clarifying question for staff is, how, for the purposes of conformity, is the actual depth and width calculated? And how did we get to the 97.4 figure? And I forget what the exact width was as well.
Give me just one second while I pull that up.
The, I believe what you're referring to, the depth going from Linfield Drive, I guess, vertically, if you're looking at the plan sheet, it says 100 feet on there, the minimum...
Apologies for interrupting. Commissioner Silverstein, could you repeat the name of the page that you're looking at, so that we can all?
Yeah, in the agenda packet, it's page 22. In the specific packet for this project, it is sheet number A-1.1.
Thank you for repeating that.
So I believe the measurement that you're referring to is the, is the width of the lot at the rear property line. So it's, because the lot is an irregular square, it doesn't meet the 9, the 100-foot depth all the way through the lot, so as you get closer to the corner, the lot becomes narrower, and the way we measure the, the width of the lot is the minimum distance outside of the front and rear setbacks. So that doesn't meet the 100-foot, or sorry, the, the minimum lot width.
Got it. So in theory, if you're outside the setbacks, it's roughly, take it the midpoint and the midpoint, or kind of the, if you, I guess if you draw a square 20 feet off of the actual property lines, you would take that length.
I'm still not clear about what you're referring to.
I'm, I'm just curious how we got to 97.4 is the actual width, when I, when like part of it, I mean, I recognize that it's because of the curve, but I'm just curious as to like what calculations are used, and how do we get to the number we're currently at?
So the measurement that you, when we take the measurement for the minimum lot width, it's taken at the narrowest point outside of the front and rear setbacks, and so the front and rear setbacks lop off, you know, a considerable amount of space on the front and rear of the lot, 20 feet on each side, and so the lot doesn't meet that minimum width distance outside of those measurements.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
Are there additional clarifying questions from commissioners?
I have one more clarifying question.
Please, Commissioner Silverstein, yeah.
And, and this is a question that I've, I've asked before, and I'll continue to ask again. From staff's perspective, if this lot were 100 feet deep instead of 97.4 feet deep, would it be coming to the planning commission today, or would it be considered to be unnecessary to get a use permit? Is there anything else? Is there? to get a use permit? Is there anything else that we should be evaluating as part of this hearing?
So for this particular project, the substandard lot is the trigger for the two-story construction. So it's because they want to build a two-story on a substandard lot, but if the lot was considered standard, they would be able to build a two-story residence without having to go under the planning commission. Thank you very much.
And through Vice Chair Schindler, if I may just clarify further, I think some of the questioning from Commissioner Silverstein might benefit the broader commission and members of the community that are here this evening to kind of clarify how we handle width and depth on a corner lot. And so I think we've, we may have gone through that discussion there using width, depth somewhat interchangeably. I just want to kind of clarify. In this case, Linfield Place is the front for purposes of zoning, and so the depth is measured from Linfield Place back. And that's that 97 feet where it doesn't meet the minimum depth. The width is greater than the minimum for the zoning district. And it's because, as Mr. Hochleitner mentioned, the irregularness where the lot lines meet at that corner, you start to kind of see that it gets a little narrower at, or sorry, I say shorter, from Linfield Place's back, kind of inboard corner from the corner of Linfield and Linfield Place to that midpoint of the curve. So that's how you get that, that's a shorter distance compared to Linfield Drive, which has a longer distance. That becomes a corner side. And you'll see that in this diagram where the Linfield Drive has the corner side setback and Linfield Place has the front required setback, and then the rear is opposite of that. So I think we're using depth and width somewhat interchangeably. I get it, you know, application-wise, but for zoning purposes, Linfield Place is the front. And I'll look to Connor to clarify anything further if needed.
Through the chair, thanks for the clarification, just for my own education. If the lot were, let's say, 200 feet wide, but still didn't have the required depth, would it be considered to be substandard based on the orientation of where the front, the designated front of the property is?
So long as it doesn't meet the requirements, it would be considered substandard.
Thank you for the helpful question and clarification. Mr. Parada's question, commentary clarified the, addressed the one clarifying question that I might have raised in this venue, which is just that the front lot line, for purposes of zoning, has not changed between the current project and the proposed project. It continues to be Linfield, it has been and will continue to be Linfield Place. So that was my clarification. Any further clarifying questions before we call for public comment on this topic? Great. So with that, Mr. Hochleitner, if you could please call for a public comment, both on Zoom and in person.
As a reminder, if you are participating online, you can click the raise hand icon on your screen, and we will activate your microphone. If you are calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad. At the moment, I don't see any hands raised online, and I don't have any comment cards from the chambers.
Thank you. We'll give it one more minute.
We still have no hands raised and no comment cards in the chambers.
Thank you. Given that, I will close public comment on this top, on this project, item F1, and move the discussion back to the dais for discussion and ultimately a motion regarding the use permit. Commissioners have questions or comments? Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, I've reviewed the project, including its setting in Linfield Oaks, and I think this is a project that I would support in any case, but particularly since this is one of those corner lots that we come across a couple of times per year that wasn't really meant to be considered substandard, but they had to write the rules somehow. So it's here before us. So I don't want to preclude anyone else's comments, but I will be supportive of this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Discussion or questions from other commissioners?
I just, I have a question either for the applicant or anyone, whether or not the sightline questions around the fence were ever resolved. I know there was a question around whether or not anyone kind of turning right from Linfield Drive or Linfield Place would have appropriate line of sight to someone in the street or crossing the street there. I just want to make sure that that has been resolved.
Yeah, so, you know, public safety was of paramount importance to us and to our neighbors. We have, you know, two young children who oftentimes play in the cul-de-sac, and we care deeply about all the children that play in the cul-de-sac. So it was very important to us to make sure that there was visibility. We did alter the fence location. There's no fence in the front yard, and we did alter the line of the fence in the backyard after consulting with our neighbors and reviewing it. We also realized that the main view hazard that exists today are the bushes, which actually create a bit of a blind spot. And as part of this project, we're going to remove all those bushes. So we do believe that the modifications we've made will enhance the safety and address the site and beyond just the view triangle requirements, given some of the other modifications that we're making.
Thank you. With that, I'm fully supportive.
If I may, oh, through the chair?
Please.
If I can offer some additional information. So we have a requirement that a view triangle of 30 feet from the assumed corner of the property line have nothing in it that's above 36 inches. And they have complied with that with their proposed fencing along Linfield Drive.
Thank you for that additional detail. Commissioner Farrak, I believe you had a question as well, a commentary?
Well, it's a comment, but a couple of comments. One is, thank you. I can see there was also thought to some privacy view lines in terms of the windows on the second story that face neighbors, being, you know, smaller, higher in general, other than the balcony could be a little bit, you know, of a sightline that, so maybe just kind of consider some vegetation screening so that there's some privacy, you know, hopefully you and your neighbors can work together on that. And I was also in the area, and it does look like it'll be nicely oriented and really like that there's, the way you've kind of divided the ADU space from the main space, I think it will be an actual ADU and not just an extension of a home. So thank you for that. And then, I guess my only kind of contradictory or, you know, I wish that the heights weren't maxed out, but it does conform, and so I'm still supportive of the project. It will appear quite a bit taller than your existing neighbors, but I'm sure over time, there'll be projects that are similar in scope and scale. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrak. Any other commentary or questions from commissioners? Not seeing any. I also will just complement the overall consideration that has gone into adhering to all of the city's requirements, responding to all of the feedback from your neighbors, ranging from fence to safety. And I also acknowledge that this is the type of project we see only because of a matter of a few feet against a specific and sort of, the specific guideline, right? So this is, this is not something we would have seen where for different, where the property lines, four feet in different location. So without any further comment, I will go ahead and look to commissioners for a motion. Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Eric?
I move to approve as per the staff report.
We have a first from Commissioner Eric.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Silverstein. I will go ahead and call the vote then. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is six yes, no votes against, and one absence. Thank you for being here. Best of luck. All right, closing item F1. We will now move into item F2, which is addressing a proposed development at 1220 Hoover Street. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit, architectural control permit, and below-market or BMR housing agreement, and a resolution recommending the city council approve a tentative map for a major subdivision to construct a new eight-unit residential condominium building on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R3 or apartment zoning district at 1220 Hoover Street. The project would include six market-rate units, one unit provided at below-market rate, and one additional market-rate unit in accordance with California State Density Bonus Law. The application is being submitted subject to the state density bonus law, government code section 65915, and relevant amendments, which permits waivers to the city's zoning ordinance requirements. The proposed project includes waivers from development standards to increase the maximum floor area, or FAR, height, and paving area for driveways and parking, and to determine that this action is categorically exempt under SEQA guidelines 15332's Class 32 exemption for infill development. Mr. Turner, are there any updates from staff or a presentation that we should be teeing up?
Yes. Good evening, Vice Chair Schindler and commissioners. I do have a very, very brief presentation, more housekeeping than anything, so let me bring this up. And then later on, we will hear from the applicant. They do have a presentation. Okay, so tonight, we are reviewing 1220 Hoover Street. Just want to clarify a few items and some of the actions will be, the planning commission will be taking tonight. So we are asking the planning commission to take action on the request for the use permit, the architectural control and below-market rate housing agreement for the eight-unit residential development on a substandard lot, and the BMR agreement to provide one two-bedroom unit at a low or moderate rate income dependent upon the lease or sale of the unit. And just to clarify, because we had some questions, so the, per the BMR guidelines, the BMR agreements are the purview of the final deciding body for projects. So in this case, since the planning commission is the final deciding body on the use permit and architectural control, the planning commission would also act on the BMR agreement. And then aside from that, we are asking the planning commission to make a recommendation of the major subdivision, the tentative map for the major subdivision to city council, who would then act on the major subdivision portion of the project. So we did receive one additional item of correspondence after publication of the staff report. The email was sent to each of the individual commissioners, and then later on to the general planning commission email. So you should have received it. But generally, the commenter had concerns about the height of the projects and its effects on light and privacy, and then expressed some concerns with the requested waivers from the development standards. And with that, I am open to take any clarifying questions.
Thank you, Mr. Turner, for the update and for the additional clarification on the two actions that the planning commission is being asked to take tonight. Do commissioners have clarifying questions at this time ahead of our public comment, which will be the next thing that we do once we get through clarifying comments? Commissioner Eric?
I have a question about how we will, if we choose to make a motion, how we will do that specifically, if there will be two motions, one for the, what, the things on which we are the final decision-making body, and one for the recommendation to city council, or if staff would prefer that to be one motion?
That would really be up to the commission, depending on how the discussion goes. You could separate the two. They are two distinct resolutions. Or you could do it as one motion.
I would say my plan was to follow the structure implied by the staff report, which was to, excuse me, tackle the use permit, architectural control, and BMR agreement as one item, because they're written together in one resolution, and to tackle the recommendation to city council as a separate vote, because it is currently composed as a separate written document in the staff report. But I think depending on the outcome of feedback from the commission, we could change that. So please, when we get into the discussion part of our agenda, let's, let's bring that up if necessary.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schindler. That was helpful.
Other clarifying questions on F2 before we get to public comment?
I have a clarifying question. This proposed project does not include any bicycle parking. I just was curious whether or not AB 2097, that doesn't require car parking if you're located within a half-mile of major transit stops, also applies to bicycle parking, which I know that our R3 zoning does require, or is that another concession that the project is asking for?
Thank you. Yeah, that's a good question. So just clarify a couple of things. So AB 2097, as you mentioned, does preclude the city from requiring vehicular parking, but it doesn't preclude the city from requiring bicycle parking. I will make one distinction here, though, the project was submitted under SB 330, which allows developers to essentially lock in development regulations that are in place at the time of a, what's called a complete preliminary application, which is sort of a high-level, you know, description of the project with a few plan sheets. It's generally what's needed for the preliminary application. This preliminary application was submitted in 2021. The, oh, and I should back up and say, if there are new standards that the city creates after application of a, it's middle of a preliminary application, those can't be enforced on, on the project. So the bicycle parking that is shown is required in the R3 standards now. That was part, that was included as part of the zoning updates back in December that were implemented, that were approved to implement the housing element update. But as of 2021, bicycle parking was not required in the R3 district. So because of that, we can't require the bicycle parking as part of this project, because they locked in the, those development agreement, development standards with the SB 330 application. So no, AB 2097 doesn't preclude bicycle parking, but we also can't require it here because it wasn't in place at the time of the preliminary application.
A quick follow-up as for my own naivety as a planning commissioner. When you say that we cannot require the project to have bicycle parking... When you say that we cannot require the project to have bicycle parking, does that imply that as a commissioner, I cannot consider that it doesn't have parking as a perspective because it's not required, or is that just a legal definition? It's not very strictly required?
So it can't be used to determine that the project is out of compliance with zoning standards? Oh, yes. And one quick, before we go to public comment, the applicant does have a presentation to you.
Okay, great. Maybe we should proceed with that presentation and double-check on clarifying questions, and then proceed to public comment, if staff thinks that is the appropriate way to move forward. Great. So let's go ahead and welcome our applicant and thank them for the additional information that they're providing via this presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners and chair. My name is Anthony Ho from LPMD Architects, designer for the project. The project site, as you can see in this first slide, is at 1220 Hoover, which is one-quarter acre in size. On the screen, you can see right at the center, the thin white building going left to right. That's the building proposed. Next. This is the surrounding neighborhood. We are right across from a three-story fire station. Next. Currently, there is an existing home with an accessory unit. This is the current site plan. Next. Our proposal is a four-story building that contains eight residential units. There will be three one-bedroom units, three two-bedroom units, and two three-bedroom units. One of the two-bedroom units will be rented to low-income initially, and then sold to moderate income at a later date. The first floor will be all parking. There will be a single drive coming in along the top of the screen there. The one-bedrooms will have one parking space per unit, and the rest will have two spaces per unit. Next. This is the second floor. There will be four units. Next. The third floor, this is the third floor, it contains the other four units. You can see that the building tapers back along the front. Next. The top floor has no additional units. They are just the upper level of the two units below, and this floor tapers back even further on both the front and the rear. Next. This is a model as viewed from Hoover and from the private drive. You can see how the building tapers back. Next. This is the back side of the building. Next. This project provides affordable housing on-site. We have used the State Density Bonus Law to have a bonus unit. And because we need to accommodate all the setbacks, the tapering requirements, parking requirements, and also fire truck access, we have asked for three waivers. Next. I'm sorry, can you go back one? Sorry, thank you. The first waiver is additional height. We need an additional 11 feet beyond the 40-foot allowed to let the fire truck get through the first floor without losing the upper levels of the two units at the top. The additional height also allow us to have parapet walls to screen the rooftop equipment. Next. The second waiver is FAR. We are requesting point eight FAR, which is slightly above the point seven allowed. Without that, we will be losing one and a half units, as you can see shaded in red. Next. The third and the final waiver is the paving amount. The 35% paving allowed is not quite enough to get all the parking that we need. As you can see, the site is narrow, and we cannot really park on both sides of the drive aisle. We are requesting an additional 10% of paving in order to get four more parking spaces. This concludes my presentation. And for any question on waivers and density bonus law, we have our land use attorney here to answer any questions. And I will hand the microphone to the project owner, Brian Shepherd, to make a brief statement. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Chair and the commissioners. Thank you very much for reviewing our application. My name is Brian Shepherd. I am a resident of Menlo Park for the past five years, and I am one of the owners of this project. This is something we are very excited about. This is in a neighborhood that I frequently walk. I don't live on Hoover, but I live very close, and it's a neighborhood I know very well. And as we put this together, I think we've tried to be very thoughtful of what the city envisions for its future, you know, growth in housing, as well as the zoning requirements, as well as aesthetically hoping to make the project look good and fit in with the downtown area. I brought all the owners here sitting behind us, and I said, like I said, we're very excited, and we're here to answer any questions or clarify anything for you as it may come up. So thank you for your time, and a special thank you to city staff and Mr. Turner for walking us through this process. It's been a long time coming, but we've made it this far, and we're very happy. Thank you.
Thank you both for being here and for the additional detail. Before we move into public comment, I also have one clarifying question to staff, and particularly to the city attorney. We've had a discussion of waivers that have been requested, and I'm hoping that you could please clarify the specific guidance for the planning commission as to how waivers should be evaluated.
Because, oh, I think this is, the waivers are just evaluated, so because we get this extra, you know, they're giving us the extra BMR unit, you can evaluate it under your normal standards. If you, you know, decide you, unless Kyle, you have any thoughts, but this is, you would evaluate the way you would evaluate the zoning standards. Do you have any thoughts?
And if I may, I could refine my question perhaps to make it a little more, a little crisper here. What is the standard for determining whether a waiver is valid and required in, as a component of the state bonus, in response to the state bonus density versus if it is not?
Yeah, let me, let me start, if I may, given some previous projects, and then I'll look to our city attorney here to expand on that if needed. In terms of evaluating the waivers, the burden of proof would be on the city if we were not to support or approve waivers as part of development projects. The applicant is entitled to those, is providing the onsite BMR unit through state density bonus law. Certainly, the planning commission can evaluate them, as Ms. Slaman mentioned, you know, using our standards and requirements and our general plan and our zoning. However, ultimately, if the commission raises concerns regarding the waivers and recommends not supporting them, that that burden of proof is on the city to identify that they would not preclude the development of the density at the site, including the BMR units and those bonus units that the applicant is actually entitled to. The concessions and waivers, sorry, in this case waivers, but there's a difference between the two, are allowed to ensure that the applicant can construct the project. And so that, that's independent of the density bonus increase, which they're, they're entitled to for providing that unit, whether it's through state density bonus law or the city's local BMR ordinance. And the applicant's invoking state density bonus law, but both would allow them for density and intensity bonuses. Hopefully, that helps. All right.
Thank you. I think, given the complexity of the issue, it's always beneficial to have the further clarification about how to think about those waivers. I know that there are no concessions that were requested or part of this conversation, but it's also beneficial to just see the contrast between the two. Are there any further clarifying questions? Okay. Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you for that. Through the chair, back to staff for a moment, touching on the waivers more thoroughly. So is, so we have in our packet, what is this, attachment, attachment E, and a certain individual representing the applicant makes assertions associated with the waivers. Now, it's understood that waivers are unlimited, but the content of the waivers, is there, is there any degree of reasonableness that staff applies to the documentation provided for a waiver? Does that come into play? And if it does, to what degree?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a good question. So as Kyle mentioned, the applicants are entitled to certain waivers, and basically, they are, you know, intended to allow the proposed density. A lot of times, zoning standards, if strictly applied, would preclude the density that was proposed. A lot of times, you know, depending on the underlying density and then the bonus that they get on top of it, you know, a certain FAR or height could be prohibitive to the development. As far as reasonableness, as Kyle mentioned, the burden of proof is on the city. I do know, in this particular case, much of the waivers come from the fire district and their, their standards as far as, like, having emergency vehicle access. So there is a level of review that does go into the waiver requests. And, you know, if it, I would say if it does seem unreasonable, we would ask for further proof, or do, you know, more research into the requested waivers, if that answers the question.
It does, and I hate when people paraphrase for me, but I'm going to take a moment to paraphrase. So as a planning commissioner, is it accurate for me to, to understand that staff has reviewed, has seen and read and digested the three height limit, FAR, and then the paving ones, and determined that, and I forget the word you just used a moment ago, but determined that they were, fill in the blank for me if you would, determined that they are conformance or...
Through the chair, Mr. Barnes, reasonable, may I suggest?
Well, I like that word, but I didn't want to put words in your mouth. So, so there, okay, so if we're going to use that, thank you. So a reasonableness test, a degree of reasonableness was applied to what was asserted in this letter, and staff determined that all three of these stood that, that degree applied by staff. Is that an okay way to think about this?
Yes. And just to give you an example, there was the fire access, emergency vehicle access. We did actually look at an alternative that would make the paving waiver unnecessary. We looked at a, an alternative that would comply with the paving requirement. It did not work for other reasons. You can access the site with a vehicle. The turning templates did not work out. So there, there was a degree of, you know, review into the waivers and alternatives to, that would make the waivers unnecessary.
Great, and all three of them?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that. I have another question in the context of clarifying questions. So I'm looking at the, the staff report, and on page two of the staff report, we are asked in, in that first paragraph there, it says, we're being asked to consider whether the project is consistent with the goals, policies, and program, the general plan, specifically the six-cycle housing element update, including but limited to, blah, blah, blah. The framework that I'm trying to create in my head is, what's discretionary, what's not? What's the basis for decision-making this evening? So in that vein, when you're asking, when the writer of the staff report is asking to consider whether it's consistent with these, if it is or is not, what's the lens? Or what is the piece of the thing that we're voting on tonight, be it our architectural control, be it use permit, be it BMR agreement? That review of this would impact my vote on, assuming that each of these were bifurcated and, you know, pulled out as separate motions?
Commissioner Barnes, may I clarify what I think, what I think you're asking so that I can be sure that we're, the, all of the commissioners are getting the context here?
I'll be happy to re-say it.
Yeah. So you are asking about the, whether we are evaluating the use permit, the architectural control, the BMR agreement. Those are the just things against which we are tasked with making a decision. And I think you are asking about which of those three components is supposed to be aligned with the general plan and housing element?
Or said differently, the original way that I said it was, we're asked to consider this, and what is this bounced up against, right? How does this, if I review this, how does it impact my decision-making this evening? And by way of example, we've got three things that we're voting on, in addition to the recommendation for the major subdivision. So to staff, just getting a sense of where this fits into the overall, we're being asked to think about this evening as we create a framework for making decisions. Can I direct that to staff? Did the staff need more clarification on that?
I think I understand what you're asking, but let me know if I'm going down the wrong path. So as a discretionary project, it is the, the planning commission's purview to review for consistency with zoning, consistency with, with the general plan. For the most part, generally, we would not bring a project that is inconsistent with these, with the zoning or the general plan. Technically, the project is discretionary. There is a framework you have to review it in. A lot of that is SB 330 and Housing Accountability Act, which does put limits on, maybe not limits. It clearly defines if a, if a project is going to be, you know, defined or conditioned in any way, that there needs to be very specific findings of, you know, public, detriments to public health. So it, you know, it is a discretionary review, staff's understanding in our review of the project as it's consistent with zoning and the general plan, and state law, with the state density bonus waivers and the density itself. I don't know, does that answer your question? Or am I off?
Thank you. So, so if it... So, so if it is, if it is in staff's opinion, zoning, general plan, for instance, in conformance with that, that could be different from a use permit. I mean, use permit, in, in the traditional senses, you know, is something deleterious to the context of a neighborhood, for instance, or does it cause, however defined, a detriment to, to the neighborhood? That is a different discussion, is it not, than, for instance, does it fit within the zoning parameter that you just called out, or does it fit within the general plan that we just talked about, which might be in here? The use permit, reviewing this project for discretionary approval for use permit is different from those. The findings associated with it, the lens to look at it, is a slightly different lens to look at it than those, correct? And please educate me if, if, you know, if there's lenses that I'm missing in order to how to frame this discussion.
So I'll take that question. So, and I, and I may have lost it fully, so please just let me know if I'm missing something. But I think Commissioner Barnes, to your point, even a single-family home use permit is reviewed against the general plan and consistency with the general plan. You know, I think staff's evaluation tends to not call out specific programs or policies of the general plan when looking at a use permit for a single-family home. So we from staff do not view a use permit for this project or a single-family home any differently in terms of evaluation against compliance with the zoning ordinance and consistency with the city's adopted general plan, including the housing element, including the land use element, and all other elements, but we'll, we'll focus on those for the sake of this response. And so hopefully that helps clarify your question, but happy to answer further if needed.
I'll, I'll yield the mic. Let me just think about that a little bit as I try to, sometimes I'm not the sharpest tool in the shed. Let me just have it run through my, my brain here as I think about this. Thank you for that. But your, your answers were perfectly fine. I just need to kind of think about a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. One of my questions actually is somewhat parallel to Commissioner Barnes. So I'm, excuse me for testing the patience of staff. I think the question that I had is essentially the same, where I have highlighted issues under goal H4, for example, or goal LU21 or LU2. These are presented in the paragraph suggesting planning commission, consider whether the project complies with the R3 regulations, which was attachment F, and then whether the project is consistent with the goals, policies, and programs of general plan. So I think step one, we are just confirming that we are, in fact, looking at this project in terms of the use permit for its consistency with the four general plan goals. So that's, I'm reading that correctly?
Yes. And I think I, I think I understand where the, the confusion is coming from. The, the use permit is the permit that is being applied for. It is under the zoning, the mechanism by which a use is conditionally allowed. The, the zoning, you know, in the municipal code, under the permits section, it talks about use permits, and it shall be granted upon finding that there are no detrimental, detriments to public health, safety, general welfare. In reviewing for those, you know, health, safety, general welfare, that's generally laid out in the, in the general plan. It's like the policies that the city, you know, follows. And the zoning just happens to be the implementation of the general plan. So in reviewing a use permit for, for the findings that you have to make, you are, in a sense, like implementing the general plan and reviewing for conformance with the general plan as, as well. And as Kyle said, we, you know, don't usually call those, those out for like single-family home projects, but technically that is what you are reviewing for when, when considering a use permit.
Right. So they underlie our review, and therefore they should be part of our judgment process.
Correct.
All right. And, sorry, I have to flip the page to continue.
So through the chair, while Commissioner Riggs is teeing up the next question, I, I do want to be mindful of the discussion here. It does still seem to be clarifying questions, but we are going a little long on that, and we haven't done public comment. So clarifying questions, still fine, but I think we should move into public comment pretty, pretty expeditiously and make sure not to have a discussion at this moment.
And that works either way for me. My next question could be taken either way, so I'll, I'll withhold it.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. I appreciate the flexibility. And thank you, Mr. Prada, for reminding us sort of to keep our clarifying questions to clarifying as opposed to our discussion and getting into support or dissent parts of the, the, the agenda. Are there any other, Commissioner Farick, you have a clarifying question?
Just a quick...
That's fine. Thank you.
Quick clarifying question. For the, in order for a project to qualify for the state bonus density, is there a requirement for a particular size of unit or bedroom combination? Like, could it be all, you know, five-bedroom units or two-bedroom? Like, is there any kind of like, or is it just the unit is a unit is a unit for the state density bonus?
For purposes of the, the state density bonus, it's kind of like a unit is a unit is, is a unit. It's more based on the percentage of the project that is affordable and at what level. So the more units that are affordable at a, at a deeper affordability level, the higher the density bonus. But it doesn't necessarily matter if it's like all one-bedroom units or if the whole development is a, all studios or a mix of bedroom types. Density bonus is based on the...
Thank you.
The proportion of affordability, affordable units.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I think, you first? Feel free.
No. Follow up on clarifying questions, Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you. We are being asked to apply the lens of just architectural control on, on this project, and we'll be seeing, we'll be hearing more about it. This project is in a, I think it was near downtown, is that the nomenclature you used in terms of its geography, excuse me, around downtown? For, for looking at this from the lens of architectural control, is there anything that's a guiding principle, for instance, related to the downtown specific plan that's applicable to this? Or is it more of a like, dislike architectural control lens that we're looking at this through or some other lens? So through the chair to staff.
So, so under SB 330, you are, for housing projects, limited to reviewing architectural standards, guidelines, that are discreet. So, or can't be, you know, an objective, sorry, not, not discreet. It's not necessarily, you can't really review against subjective standards. In this particular case, in the R3 around downtown, we did add some design standards as part of the zoning updates, since those were not in place at the time of the SB 330 preliminary application. They are objective, but for purposes of determining if the, the project is consistent with the zoning, we can't apply those. So I know we had a lot of discussion during the, the rezonings about design standards in the downtown as well. And a lot of objective standards did get placed or updated in the specific plan. In the R3 around downtown, we, we adopted those later, but they, they can't be applied. Does that answer the question?
So for the purposes of this evening and voting on architectural control, what is the, what is the, what am I using as a reference point to vote yea or nay on whether it's an acceptable project from the standpoint of applying architectural control? Help me to frame that, if you would, please.
Yeah. So you, you would still use the findings in the, in the architectural control section outlined generally in the, in the resolution. So there are the findings that you have to make. It's a little bit complex because a lot of those findings are somewhat subjective in nature, having to do with the, you know, the characteristics of the neighborhood, parking, health and welfare, that sort of thing. So you are still reviewing against those for purposes of the use permit and the architectural control entitlements. We are just limited to, for compliance purposes, the, the objective standards.
Got it. So it, it is, in a sense, from a single commissioner viewpoint, agree or disagree with the staff report and in the findings related to architectural control as, as drafted by staff? In a sense, correct? Because I, I could look at, I could read them and say, you know what? I, I don't agree with them, which would form a basis, or I do agree with them, and that forms a basis. Does that sound about right?
Yeah. That, that sounds about right.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that.
And through the chair, as we start to talk about forming opinions, that starts to get me really concerned about these being clarifying questions still. So if, if we could put a pause, staff would appreciate that and move to public comment and then have this, what seems to be more like a deliberation. I don't think that's what Commissioner Barnes intended, but I just want to use this as an opportunity to say we're starting to veer into the, the statements of opinions on the project a little bit more.
Thank you, Mr. Prada. I think we've had a, a number of good questions, just for commissioners to understand essentially the yardstick against which each decision needs to be measured. And now that we've had a chance to ask some of those questions, Mr. Hochleitner, could you please call for public comment on this? We'll take public comment and then move into the more subjective discussion component of F2.
Thank you. As a reminder, during public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions remotely by clicking the hand icon on your screen. If you are calling in tonight, please press star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. If multiple people are speaking on the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your time, and we will make sure each person gets a chance to speak. For those participating in person, please fill out a comment card at the back of the room and hand it to me now. We do have a couple of hands online. We do have an in-person comment card. If you'd like to do the in-person first, we can do that.
I think that's appropriate. But in totality, Mr. Hochleitner, are there sort of less than 10?
Yes. There's one in-person and two online.
Great. Thank you. Then I think we can proceed with the standard three minutes of per, per speaker. Yes, let's, let's go ahead and start with our in-person speaker.
Margaret, you may approach the podium.
Thank you for your time. My name's Margaret Neff. I'm one of the owners of one of the homes to the west, the front house to the west of the complex being proposed. Was original owner from when these units were built in 2013, and we always knew there'd be development coming, and we would be welcoming new neighbors. But I think what's different here is the proportionality and the compatibility and the lack of both of those, such as that we really do think this is a detriment to the neighborhood in terms of how it is currently proposed. There are a number of comments that I have already, I think, in the packet, as well as some of my neighbors. So I wanted to highlight three extra things that came out in the packet that we were able to review just recently. One is, the first one's about the height waiver, and this affects both shadowing, light, air, all the things that we sort of all would be concerned about. But I'd like to comment on one of the, on points that was brought up about, do we have enough of information that's being presented to us? And one of them is about the 14-foot undercut. We had the same issue with our complexes when they were built, that you needed enough width for the fire department to be able to get back. Our driveway was widened. It's 17 feet to 19 feet wide, which looks to be the same as what's in the current project. So is that 14-foot undercut really an argument for the height, for the EMS access? And I would just ask for where the fire department assessment is of that and whether those two things are actually related. I think another piece would be privacy. Most of the windows on the west side of the complex are facing us, and some of them are full, full height. Could we look at those and relook at sill height, so whether some of those windows could actually be adjusted so we don't have so much, so of people of this big complex bearing down? In the picture that I sent, submitted, which was not part of what was in the original proposal, or is in the packet but not seen today, you just get a sense of the proportionality and the lack of sort of appropriate proportionality for our community. There's nothing that big, even the fire station is not that big, and you can see how it bears down on its neighbors. A couple, another two things. One is landscaping. I noticed in the packet that the landscape architect was actually hired by the developer, and maybe that's typical, but would hope that our city arborist had actually looked at this as well. As a tree city, I think people would be concerned that they're not actually able to plant as much as they're taking away in terms of the heritage trees. And one of the last things that appeared new in the renderings was the placement of a sliding metal gate along the front of the driveway for security. That brings up issues of noise, for one, but then also really just adds to the whole perspective of this being commercial, industrial, and just not consistent with the rest of the neighborhood, which is much more rural and welcoming. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
We will go to our first online, Michael. I can't pronounce your last name, but I'm going to activate your microphone, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. I hope you can hear me now.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. This is Michael Giudicesi, G-I-U-D-I-C-E-S-S-I, and my wife Cheryl is here. Cheryl is the title holder of 1236 Hoover. We are neighbors to Margaret Neff and join in Margaret's concise and effective comments. We provided to the members of the commission and to the city our written comments, and we will not read those again. We hope that they will be accepted into the record and received and reviewed by the commission as a whole. Those comments deal with a number of issues. I think, as I heard the clarifying questions from the, the commission tonight, what I was most taken with is, it seems that the question that is being asked is, is there a path for you to say no? And the answer to that is, there are several paths for you to say no. I think, I think when staff said to you that you can make determinations based on detriment to health, safety, and welfare, there are health, safety, and welfare detriments to this project largely fact, or, or fostered by the incredible height waiver that is being sought. I was also taken by the opening comments of the vice chair, that you are not a policymaking body. We understand that. But think of this, the city has adapted its policy, and its policy is that the height restriction for this neighborhood is 40 feet high. And yet, the applicant here asks you to approve a waiver to increase the height by 25%, actually by, by a third. He wants to go from 40 to 50, so I guess that's 25%. He wants to increase it so that they can put a 50-foot... He wants to increase it so that they can put a 50-foot, four-inch-tall building, a four-story building, on a lot that is 54 feet wide. They want to build something as tall as their lot, their lot is wide. That simply is not beneficial to the community and, in fact, is detrimental to the health, safety and welfare, especially of those of us to the west of the project. When the architect spoke tonight, he said that two of the units would be lost if they had to crop that top floor off. But if you look closely, it's not two units, it's the top two floors of the units that go from the third and fourth floors. So they're not trying, essentially telling you like it is. Their pictures don't show it like it is. This whole project doesn't show.
I'm sorry, your time has expired. Our next call-in guest, there's not a name attached to it, but you are the only phone person. I will now activate your microphone. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Galaxy and I am a resident of Menlo Park. And I want to acknowledge that I have some concerns about this project. First, in addition to the privacy concerns that others have previously mentioned for the building to the left, I would add in privacy concerns for the building to the right, in particular, the front deck, the side windows and the side balcony. In addition, while I understand that trees will be added along the right side of 1220 as a privacy buffer, I also feel concerned that the trees in the new building might cast a shadow and block sunlight for the front deck, side windows and side balcony of the building on the right. Increased shadow and decreased sunlight could affect the ability of tenants on the right to garden on the front deck and side balcony, as well as inside the affected windows. Increased shadow and decreased sunlight could also lead to higher heating bills in the winter for the building on the right if it is cooler. In addition, I do want to note that there could be an increase in demand for on-street parking on a street with high parking restrictions on the fire station side of the street. While one-bedroom units will have one parking spot and other units will have two parking spots, some one-bedroom residents at 1220 might have more than one vehicle, leading to a need for street parking for one vehicle. And a few of the two-bedroom or three-bedroom residents might have more than two vehicles, leading to a need for street parking for one vehicle. And all units might have occasional guests beyond the one-guest spot that's already provided. So street parking might become full more quickly. Street parking can already become quite full during the workday, and I wonder whether some sort of daytime residential parking program will ultimately be needed. In addition, onsite parking for 13 vehicles could generate additional noise just by the vehicles entering in addition to the noise of the gate. Also, in light of not having bike parking, I would request that management consider bike-friendly regulations, which is allowing residents to mount bikes on the walls of their unit or their parking stall, because many folks will have bikes. And some units will have more than one bike, especially imagine a family, you know, two parents, two kids with bikes. So planning for bike parking in some fashion does seem in part important, regardless of whether the law requires us to require it. Last but not least, although a construction plan might not yet be publicly available and this might not be the time to fully address that, I do want to address, I do want to request careful consideration of how to bring in large construction vehicles, a high amount of supplies and many construction workers, while still allowing residents to access their driveways, their put-out recology bins as needed and get by as needed on a street that currently has a high degree of parking restrictions. Parking is never allowed on the corner near the fire station on that side of Hoover, and parking is not allowed between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM on the rest of the street on that side of Hoover, with the exception of we.
Could we just let the speaker finish their sentence, please?
Of course.
Thank you. Please, please continue your sentence. We don't want to cut you off mid-thought.
Oh, I request careful consideration of these concerns so that we can all plan for success of our respective endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comment.
Vice Chair Schindler, I think for due process, the previous speaker's time expired before their final thoughts, and we took a stance of stopping that. So since we gave a few extra minute or seconds, I should say, here, if we could give 15 to 30 seconds of the previous speaker back, I think that would be appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Prada. I completely agree. Could we go back to this, the second online speaker, if they are still available, and encourage them to please to finish their last couple of thoughts and give them an additional 15 to 20 seconds, as suggested?
Michael, you're unmuted. You should be able to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Schindler. As I said, you have many paths to say no. We just simply ask that you exercise those paths and look to staff to say, find us reasons why we can support saying no rather than accepting their grounds for saying yes.
Thank you for your comment. Have we reached the end of our queue, Mr. Hochleitner?
We have two additional in-person comments.
Wonderful, thank you.
John Wu, if you'd like to come up.
I'm John Wu. I live at 721 Elizabeth Lane. Elizabeth Lane runs.
Mr. Wu, I'm sorry, just a moment. Are we sure the microphone is activated?
It is, yes.
Yeah, it is.
Perfect, thank you. I want to be sure that the folks online can hear.
You can also adjust it a little bit as well, if you want.
Thanks. Sorry, this is really hastily written. I live on Elizabeth Lane, which is one house up down from the fire station, and it's on the opposite side of the road of the proposed development. It seems that a lot of the pressure to approve this application is from the state. This would ignore the rules Menlo Park has put into place as acceptable practice. I would urge you to protect us from a party that is not us. The community has zoning laws because they reflect the way the members of this community feel housing should be done in the community. And the application, this application is far outside of our laws, so that I would urge you to take on the burden of rejecting this application and protecting what the people in this town actually want, which is reflected in our zoning laws. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
We have one additional in-person. Tracy, if you would like to come to the podium.
Yeah, I also am a homeowner on Elizabeth Lane, and I wanted to strenuously concur with the previous speakers, both in-person and online, with specific emphasis on the height, the density, the impact of the street parking, the impact and the toll of the look and the feel of the community, and also to highlight potential impact of all of these cars and the residents for this subject property on the emergency services of our fire station, which was recently expanded to include some extremely large fire truck vehicles and different turning radiuses and access and egress on various parts of the street across from the subject property. So thank you for your consideration, and hopefully you'll deny it all.
Thank you for your comment.
We have reached the end of our speaker queue. We have no additional hands raised online and no additional comment cards in the chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Hochleitner. Given that, I think we've had folks, two rounds of folks in-person, and we've given folks time online, at this time, I am going to close public comment and move the discussion back to the dais, ultimately for, at least at this point, two motions. One motion with regard to the use permit, architectural control and BMR agreement, and then a second motion, proposing here a second vote about the recommendation to city council regarding the tentative subdivision map. So that this, my working hypothesis is two votes at the end of our discussion. So I would love to open it up for commissioner discussion and questions.
I'd like to ask questions of the applicant, if possible.
Commissioner Silverstein, please.
Yeah, before I make up my mind entirely, I do want to get some clarity on the waivers that are being asked and the implications thereof. This was mentioned in one of the public comments, but I also jotted it down as something to note. On both the height waiver, which says that by going from 51 down to 40 feet, we would lose two units, is it true that you would lose two full units, or is it just that the three-bedroom units would need to be smaller and to mirror the floor plan of the second floor as opposed to the third floor? And then my second question, which is in a similar vein, the paved area waiver says that without the waiver, the project would lose four parking spots and says specifically this in turn would require a reduction in the number of units, at least two, in order to meet the parking standards. And I just want a clarity on whether or not that was true and whether or not you would be able to have an eight-unit building with only nine parking spots. Thank you.
So my name is Melanie Griswold, and I'm the land use attorney. And so thank you for asking those clarifying questions. I'm happy to weigh in here on the waiver. So just to be clear, a waiver must be granted if it physically precludes the project as designed. And so it's not just as designed with the number of units, it's the project that is proposed before you. And there's specific case law that, in which the question has been raised, does the applicant need to redesign the project? Because it could have done more, it could have made the unit smaller, it could have reduced the number of amenities. It basically could change the project to better meet the zoning standards that are in place. And several cases have come out and said, no, the applicant has the ability to design the project as they see fit to provide the units. So in this case, we have provided an additional unit, as noted, that does entitle the project to density bonuses, and it does entitle the project to waivers. And the waiver there is not whether it physically precludes the units, although we have provided that information to the planning commission, but it really is, the question is, does it preclude physically the project as proposed before the planning commission? And then in terms of your question around the height, it, the reduction of height would not eliminate the units, it would eliminate the two units as designed. So it would essentially preclude the three-bedroom unit and force a two-bedroom unit. And we do have the housing HCD who has weighed in on this issue with another city stating that if you ask the applicant to begin redesigning their project to make the unit smaller, then you also come into fair housing issues in that being able to provide a variety of units is a fair housing issue.
Really quickly, does that, does your response apply as well to the parking situation and whether or not that the incremental four units as per the paved area waiver are necessary as per the current design of the project?
Yes, you know, I looked at that, at that question because of the comments that were raised in the, in the letter. And so going back to the actual standard, which is, does it physically preclude the project as proposed? Then in applying that, we have designed a project that has parking spots, and so if we were to apply the parking standard, we would lose those parking spots as designed. Does it actually preclude the number of units? Given AB 2097, no, we could design the project without having that parking.
This is a follow-up question to either the applicant or to staff. The implication of what you last said was that if you designed a project that was 150 feet high, that had 600 parking spots, that allowed for the, you know, that, that then we said was unnecessarily high, if we are then saying you have to redesign the project, would that also, in theory, violate the fair housing laws? And I mean, I'm using extreme examples, but I'm wondering whether or not there's nuance here? Or is it kind of a binary thing where if we say you have to make a single change, then we're actually asking you to redesign the entire project?
The courts have never considered whether there is a, never considered a project that's that extreme. And so I think we might see that with the builders remedy projects that have been proposed. But the court cases that have considered it have been situations where the developer clearly could have redesigned the project to eliminate amenities, change the project, be more zoning compliant, and the courts have come out again and again saying, you do not need to redesign the project. And in this case, the changes, while the neighbors may feel that they're extreme, they are not particularly extreme. They're one extra floor and we're providing one extra unit. There are small changes in the FAR from .7 to .8. There are small changes in the paving. And as Mr. Turner has indicated, these changes on the paving were necessitated by fire access. So this isn't something that, where we're proposing an extreme project. It is fairly zoning compliant, but it does deviate in certain ways and allow us to provide that additional affordable housing unit.
Thank you for that very helpful additional detail. I think in the context of this particular set of questions, it's very relevant to get into the standing, the outstanding case law. I would like to just turn to staff and ask for a merger of two things that have been talked about here today, for this perspective on what case law has been and the cases that have come up as it regards to waivers needing to apply to units as designed, and how we should think about those statements adjacent to the statement of burden of proof being on the city if we were to not, if we were to try and make the case that the waivers were not necessary. Could you expand on what that looks like as a, for the city?
Can you, can you phrase that, can you repeat that question? I will say that.
Yeah, I'll try, I'll try. On the one hand, burden of proof for the city.
Right.
And on the other hand, that the waivers are, the waivers are about what is required for the project as designed.
It, that is true. So we have, I don't want to say we have to, but there, the law is that we have to consider it as designed, the waivers as designed. If there is a change that you will require the applicant to redesign, that does, we do run into some issues under state law. I would say that case law, she's correct, in that we should tread, you know, we should tread somewhat, you know, we have to look at the project as designed and consider the waivers with the project as designed. And if, if.
Perhaps I can further clarify my question with even a little bit more detail, and I don't presume to put words in your mouth. But I'll try. Is it an extensive set of legal time, energy, money and risk for the city to go through that burden of proof that you referenced? If, if the city were to say that the waiver, to deny the waiver and claim it were not
I would say the opposite, but I think that there is, you know, there is a, there is a risk for the city. I mean, it's a really high standard that we have to show to deny the waiver, and it's the, the health and safety, and we'd have to show that we can't even mitigate that, that risk in denying the waiver. And so it is a high, there is, there is a risk for the city. It's not, it's not a low threshold or cost for the city to really prove that denying this waiver has a danger to health and safety, and that danger can't even be mitigated. That's what we would need to show in order to deny the waiver.
Thank you. I think the question that I was asking was that it is a significant amount of work in order to.
Exactly, yes.
Make that point.
Make that showing.
One way or the other.
Yes.
In terms of staff time.
Yes.
Legal resources.
Yes. Yes, exactly, yes. Thank you. Perfect, yes.
Thank you. I think it is the responsibility of this commission to take into consideration. Thank you. I think it is the responsibility of this commission to take into consideration the resources and the risk, et cetera. I think mine was a follow-up question to Commissioner Silverstein. Were you done with your line?
I just have a super quick follow-up question.
Okay, and then--
Is health and safety defined anywhere, or is that a judgment on the commission?
I can answer that question. So, under the government code, section 65589.5, it is in fact defined, and it is an objective standard, and it requires a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective identified written public health or safety standards, policies, or codes. And I just want to also point out that, to the extent that there is any inconsistency in the project, there is also timelines in which to identify these inconsistencies. So, once those timelines pass, they cannot be used to deny or condition the project. And that's under the same Housing Accountability Act that is applicable to this project. So, this project is a qualified housing development project. That means that it is protected under the Housing Accountability Act and protected under SB 330. And legally, is there a path to saying no? No, there is no path to say no on this project, because it is protected under the Housing Accountability Act, and any inconsistencies have not been raised in a timely manner. And we are entitled to waivers to overcome any inconsistencies. So, those timelines are 30 days from the date that the application was submitted, a complete application to the city. Once you pass that 30 days, by law, those inconsistencies are waived, and the project shall be deemed consistent. And that's also in that same government code section that I cited.
Thank you for that additional detail. Just by way of clarification, the definitions that you referenced for health and safety were the objections that you were implying have been, the definition of something as not adhering to health and safety requirements, right, is that is the decision or the qualification within a 30-day timeline that you have mentioned? So, the description of something as not meeting a health and safety standard was something that had to happen in a specific 30-day window that you are describing as having passed?
Correct. So, the inconsistency must be identified within the 30 days, and the inconsistency, and then if you're going to make a denial, then it needs to be based on the objective standards. But you would have to cite the health and safety standard that is not being met within that 30 days. And so, I did, when I provided the significant quantifiable direct, that's directly out of the statute, and that sets up section D.
Thank you. And just for the broader awareness of myself and everyone else here, who makes that determination within the 30 days?
That would be city staff.
Okay, so, city staff makes a determination about whether or not a project is within the definitions of health and safety in that 30-day timeframe?
Correct. So, when the project is submitted within the 30-day period under Permit Streamlining Act, the city staff would be responsible for providing, once the project is determined to be complete, then they have to provide that determination of inconsistency within the 30 days for a project that is under 150 units, as this one is here.
Thank you. That was very helpful for me, and I suspect for many others here. Commissioner Barnes has his light on.
I do. And just a general note, while I appreciate the expertise of the counsel of the applicant, I do want to make sure that we are hearing from our own county, excuse me, city council, as it relates to how these work, because my, just to make sure we're getting two viewpoints on this, and that we're getting the applicant, who I'm sure is well-versed on this, but that may not be, in fact, the interpretation by the city for these particular things. So, I want to make sure that we cross-check that at a certain point. I also--
Commissioner Barnes, it feels like a very apropos point to engage with staff and city council to ask that question.
I will in a moment. Thank you. And I do also, lest anyone think I'm signaling any acceptance or predetermined view of this project, I'm not. I'm intellectually curious as to how this process all works. So, I don't want to disabuse anyone of any notion that I've, you know, come to a decision on this, or am trying to direct the discussion any one way or another. With that said, I also want to say that should any commissioner have a point of view about this project, I do not believe that is the purview of the commissioner, at least for me, to take into account whether there's financial resources or other resources for the city to litigate this or not. That's for the city to figure out. That's for council to figure out. That's for city council to further discuss. The burden of that is not on me. So, I know, Chair, that you had made that note, but I do want to note my particular disagreement with that. That's for, you know, other folks to figure out. I think my job tonight is to try to figure out how this thing all works. And if I come to a decision that's going to create, city council has to take action on this or not, then I'll leave that to city council to take that action. So, with that said, I do want to go back and cross-check for my understanding, at least, some of the things that we just discussed a moment ago, to make sure that we're, as a body, and me as an individual, understanding correctly some of the nuances of what can and cannot be done, and some of the timelines. Thank you for that.
The health and safety finding has to come from the commission. And I'll look into the greater details of that, but that is with the commission. And I will get back to you on the details of that momentarily.
And I'm sorry, since I asked the question, when you say that is with the commission, could you further tell me a little bit more about what you mean by that?
With the planning commission. Like, you, the board, makes these findings. We can always come back. But you are the board who is looking at the health and safety, like, you would have to look at these issues. But I would ask that I have some time to look into it further and get back to you with an answer. We're looking into it.
Sure, sure. And that applies to the definition of it as well, or just who has jurisdiction over it? Because I thought, if I was understanding, it was two things. One was, I think, I thought I heard we were searching for a definition of it. And two, it sounds like you're saying that whatever that definition is, the interpretation of that, one way or another, lies with the planning commission. Did I get that right?
Yes, the interpretation. The definition, I will, it is the government code section that was referenced, and I'm pulling that up. But you have the discretion to, like, it's with the city, the planning commission, that we decide, you decide if the, there are health and safety issues that cannot be mitigated, and that the project is, you decide from there if you're going to approve or deny. But that is, the health and safety, you know, that's part of your analysis here. The city would have to, it is a high standard, and I will look into, if you would just give me some time to research it and get back to you.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And building on Commissioner Barnes' questions, could you also please identify the, validate or clarify the timeline? So, the time, the point at which some kind of designation as something being consistent with health and safety, there was a reference to a decision having to have been made within a certain time window?
And that is what I'm looking into. There are, obviously, the city has to act within 30 days on certain aspects of the application, but I just need to, I need to look into the timeline. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Commissioner Riggs, your light has been on.
Yes, thank you. I'll just take a second to emphasize the issue that council is going to review for us, and note that if, in fact, there were 30-day statute of limitations on this comment about health and safety, that we would have long since missed the opportunity on the Willow Road application, as I understand it. So, needless to say, I will be crossing my fingers on the clarity of this question. There, of course, has been clarity here that this commission cannot sit in judgment without written criteria. In other words, this cannot be a subjective review. So, I would like to verify, because as a commissioner, I try to keep a lot in my head, and I don't frankly open my inch-and-a-half-thick downtown-specific plan all that often anymore. I recall that among the several subzones that we have in the downtown-specific plan, at least several of them have the restriction that above 30 feet, additional stories have to be set back from the street facade. I believe we also included something similar for where the building face addresses single-family residential. Can you clarify for me if downtown adjacent has a similar line in the downtown-specific plan?
Yes. So, the R3 around downtown does have what is called a building profile requirement. It's that similar, you have, I will say this changed under the zoning updates, but under the R3 around downtown requirements at the time, the building profile started at 28 feet and then ended at a 45-degree angle, similar to the downtown. A lot of the downtown districts are much higher with that facade height. I'll say this project does comply with the building profile, and it is applied to the public right-of-way, so they have to take a building profile from the street, but adjacent to single-family zoning districts, which, while the next-door properties are developed as single-family residences, essentially, it's still in the R3 district and not a single-family district. So, the building profile would not be applied on that side. The rest of the surrounding properties are all in the specific plan district. So, it's a multifamily, mixed-use, commercial district. Building profile would also not apply to those sides. So, in this case, the only side it applies to is the front.
All right. Thank you. And then I also wanted to ask regarding the removal of the heritage tree at the street. Is it possible for an applicant to provide a project design that would require the removal of street facilities?
Yes, and an applicant is allowed to apply for a heritage tree permit for trees in the public right-of-way. That is reviewed by the city arborist. It goes under the same general process as a regular heritage tree removal permit for trees on the property. So, there are a few trees. They were all reviewed as part of one overall heritage tree removal permit, where the applicants are, you know, required to provide a feasible alternative, if there is one. So, we reviewed it with the city arborist, given some of the limitations and bounds we were working with under the Housing Accountability Act. We waived that alternate design requirement, but then they are required to replace the trees, both the onsite heritage tree and the street tree in the public right-of-way with the value of the heritage trees.
I understand the rules of replacement. It's the determination that the existing street tree has to be removed to begin with. Does something in state law force the hand of the city arborist? The reason I ask, and I'm doing this only from memory, but it seemed to me that the London Plain tree is on the right side of the lot. Correct me if I'm wrong, because the driveway is on the left side of the lot. But am I remembering that wrong? I could easily be doing so.
I believe the street tree, and I'll try to pull up the plans, is in the middle of the driveway, essentially.
Oh, so it's on the left side of the lot width?
Yeah, it's on the left. It's right in front of the other tree that was approved for removal, as being in conflict with the proposed driveway.
All right. In other words, an alternative plan would have required mirroring the building plan, and that would have been an adverse effect on the left-side neighbors?
That was the alternative that was provided, a mirroring of the property.
All right. So, in your review, that was not a beneficial solution?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
The city arborist's review in consultation with planning staff, but yes.
Then regarding parking, I realize this is, at this point, more a legal issue than a planning issue. But since parking under AB 2097 is not required, and the bonus law does not in itself require parking, are you able, or I should say, is it inevitable to make the nexus between the project as designed and having benefits that are not required by either the state or by the city? I mean, to put it another way, if it had been submitted as a project with a mass or use, that was maybe not use, but a mass or design that was not required for the success of the design and was detrimental visually to the neighborhood, would it be necessary for us to approve it simply because it was part of the application?
Can you restate your question? So, we're talking about if this project--
If something, if a project were submitted with something, well, here's a real-life example. There was a disagreement between a planning commissioner and an applicant regarding a particular facade on the applicant's building. And so, the applicant redesigned the building with a window that had four arches, and the second of the four arches was raised, in essence, to present what is called the finger. That project was built. If this project came forward with that window design facing the fire station, for example, are we required to approve it because the, for example, the logic could be presented, the extended window provided light to the upper level of a high-ceiling space? I'm testing for what the limits are on justifying parking, which is not required by any entity.
Yeah, Commissioner--
Yeah, Commissioner Riggs, if I may start, and then I'll turn it over to our city attorney to add. Appreciate the discussion, and I think, maybe just taking a step back further, I mean, there are entitlements before the commission that are discretionary. And the dialogue this evening has been a lot about the need to adopt or approve one way or another based on state law. I do want to take it back, though, that the planning commission is the decision-making body on the entitlements. And there is a lot of interplay between state law and local law, and a number of those are still in flux, and a lot of them are through the courts, in terms of like where that authority ends or begins, depending on which side you're looking from. What I want to say here, though, is that we do believe from staff that there is discretion for the planning commission to evaluate the project with the entitlements that are discretionary, the use permit, the architectural control, the BMR agreement, as well as the major subdivision. There are limits, and that's where I'll turn it over to our city attorney to expand on here, but there is these findings that need to be made by the planning commission as the agency in charge of carrying out the city's local ordinances and requirements, and, in this case, also state laws. And that didn't quite answer your question, but provides a little bit of context with regard to your question about discretion. I think there, while the applicant's attorney does purport that is the state law where the planning commission has limited flexibility based on changing the design, there may be some flexibility there, and that's still undetermined through a lot of the court cases. So with that, I'll turn it over to our attorney to kind of bail me out a little bit.
No, I will add that, you know, like, if you want to add a privacy screening, you have discretion to do that. As to, I just also want to kind of use this as a bouncing-off point to the health and safety question. It is true that the city has 30 days after completion of the application to identify inconsistencies with the standards, or if the project is deemed to comply, but that doesn't apply to the health and safety finding. Although health and safety is narrowly defined, the city can separately make findings to deny if a health and safety standard is truly violated and you can show that. And to circle back, you do have some discretion. We want to make sure that we're avoiding, or, you know, that it's, that we're not physically precluding the project as designed. That is kind of the standard, and so that's, there is a dialogue there, but if, for example, adding a privacy screening is something that you would like, that is something you could, you have discretion over. So, does that answer some of the questions?
It does. It gives me a format for much of it. That still leaves open what may be a well-worn question. It is one of our written goals, LU 2.1, about neighborhood compatibility. If the neighborhood can establish, based on zoning expectations, that this project is not compatible, is not the zoning a written guideline, and are the neighbors not the valid interpreters of that zoning?
Can I ask another rephrase? Sorry.
Oops. I'm saying, can we find that, based on LU 2.1, one of, you know, the city's goals, that this is not compatible with the neighborhood? And we can certainly define what makes it incompatible. I mean, we have a letter from the adjacent neighbor that actually does a pretty good job of pinpointing those conflicts. And these are conflicts that, in terms of engineering, need not be there.
If this is where the board is headed, I would, I might advise a continuance so that we can look into it, with the awareness that we have a five-hearing limit, and we've had two hearings on this so far. I just, I believe it's two, although staff can confirm. Because I suppose you can make that finding, but, you know, we, it's such a high standard to deny these, this, like, under state law, and I would really focus on that element of, well, okay, it's not compatible with the neighborhood, but we, you know, even, yeah, I would need to look into it more. I can answer, you know, for now that the health and safety is with you, and you're not, you know, we don't have to do it in 30 days, but I would, I might recommend, you know, we'd have to look into it, in which case we'd have to come back to you with that analysis.
All right.
If I may add, just to clarify, so I understand, Commissioner Riggs, your point about the land-use policy that you identified. I do think it's important for the commission to recognize that there are other policies and programs that should also be considered regarding housing production, development. You know, compatibility with the neighborhood is, of course, of importance, and also proximated to other adjacent uses downtown, the Caltrain Station. Those are some of the policies that Mr. Turner identified in the report for the commission's consideration. I just want to make sure that the commission thinks about those holistically as part of any deliberation and recommendation one way or another this evening. There's a number of policies and programs and goals of our general plan, including the housing element and land-use element, that would need to be considered more holistically than individually.
Mr. Prada, I appreciate the way you phrase that. I'm actually aware of and supportive of a couple of the, shall we call them, contrary goals, but I did want to clarify this one. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate the identification of another alternative to moving through to a vote and resolutions tonight. But before we significantly consider that, I think it's important that we hear from all of the commissioners, as alluded to by Mr. Prada, on the broad range of city goals and how this particular project aligns or does not with those city goals. Mr. Eric, Commissioner Eric.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schindler. I want to commend everyone who came out tonight to express public comment. I think it's commendable to participate in the governance process. That being said, I want to take a step back and have us understand, or at least talk about, the context of the laws that are applicable here. I went to a planning commissioner training recently that staff recommended we go to, which was very helpful, and at that training, one of the teachers made a joke, one of the instructors made a joke, and said, "It seems like in California, in order to run for statewide office, you need to be pro-housing, and in order to run for local office, you need to be anti-housing." And everyone laughed, and I thought about that comment, and then I thought, you know what, it's the same people who are voting for their local representatives and for their statewide representatives. And it just turns out that, for the most part, when we vote for statewide representatives, we think about different issues than when we think about local representatives. When we elect statewide representatives, we think about, is the economy growing? Are there enough jobs? Are there good teachers in schools that can live nearby those schools and teach there? We think about different issues. When we elect local representatives, sometimes we're thinking about what building gets built on our street. All of that to say, this commission is not a policymaking body, as we recite every single time we come together, and we are, in my opinion, and I think by law, not allowed to disregard state law any more than we would disregard local law. In this case, state law provides for the ability for this housing development to be built, under the conditions that the developer and the owner of the property think that it needs to be built, and sets a very high bar for saying that it can't be built that way. There have been a number of questions tonight, asking about, you know, well, if we built a really tall building with lots of parking, what would happen? I think that's still to be worked out. This building seems to be at least well within the bar of, or well within the limit of, there's a very high bar to turn something like this down. I'm looking at the staff report right here. As Mr. Prada called out, there are goals the city has around infill housing adjacent to downtown, which this project meets wholeheartedly. There are city goals around housing to address local housing needs. This project meets those goals. There are policies for affordable and moderate-income housing. This project meets those goals. I would also say, to the point of neighborhood compatibility, there are certainly arguments to be made, one way or the other. I find this project to be perfectly compatible with a neighborhood that is located close to transit and also located close to downtown, where people want to walk, have a walkable neighborhood, where they have lots of neighbors nearby. So, to me at least, this project more than meets the bar that it needs to meet, which is to say, it would be a really high bar to reject it, and in order to find that high bar, you would need to pick and choose reasons that I don't think are quite fair to this project. So, I will be supporting this project. I think it's a wonderful use of downtown. I want to commend the owner and the developer for developing something that obviously took quite a deal of creativity, and knowing that they would come to this commission and likely face opposition from several people in the community. Again, I think that opposition should be commended. It's good to participate in your community. It's good to express your opinion. These are hard issues. The dissonance that sometimes exists between how we elect statewide representatives and local representatives means that our job up here is really hard, but fundamentally, we are, again, not a policymaking body, and we are here to understand whether or not this project before us is reasonable, given the laws that are available. So, I want to congratulate you on getting this far. I hope we see this project built. I think it will be a great addition to the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Eric. Commissioner Silverstein, I believe your light is on.
Yeah, I have one process question for staff, and then I kind of want to opine on the project as a whole, kind of akin to what Commissioner Eric did, but my process question is, as part of the rubric for determining whether or not there is a public safety, sorry, a public health and safety concern with this project, the specific California code says, "And there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the specific adverse impact." My question is, if there is a feasible method to mitigate the impact, what is the process to tweak the potential design that would be, I'm talking about a very small change, where we don't deny the project, but we identify the mitigation method? Is that something that is on the table for a discussion like this? If we say, hey, there's a health requirement, you know, there's a health concern, but in order to mitigate that, you just need to, you know, do one simple thing?
Yes, you can do that. You can discuss what you can mitigate and how you can do it, and that is in your discretion.
Okay, thank you. So with that being said, I want to echo and reaffirm the perspective of Commissioner Eric on how this project does very much so conform with our broader goals as a state, as a broader community. I really want to highlight the fact that this is right next to downtown, and this is right next to a downtown that we are working tirelessly to make as vibrant as possible. And we have specific task forces just dedicated to figuring out, how do we get more people downtown? How do we get more people shopping? How do we get more people just being in that broader area? And to whatever extent we can encourage the development of density around these hubs is only going to benefit the broader community who lives and interacts and enjoys a great downtown that we have and we want to continue to promote in Menlo Park. With that being said, this is, I guess, dependent on the rest of the commissioners, but I do have a public health concern with the project, and that is very specifically related to the amount of parking that's provided. While I understand that SP 330 does not formally apply, or, the SP 330 means that this project does not technically need to adhere to maximum parking or minimum parking or our bike storage restrictions. This is a project right next to downtown, and we are going above and beyond to try to allow for way more parking than is necessary, more parking than we've decided is the minimum, particularly for places like this. And at the same time, there's no bike parking. And when I think about the, when I put my empathetic hat on and think about a person who's going to be living here, a person who's going to want to bike around the community, if I'm living on the third floor of an apartment and there's no bike storage, I'm not going to bike around. And I am going to drive, and I'm just going to cause more traffic to go everywhere, and so I would implore the project to figure out a way where we can dedicate two of those parking spots for bike storage, and thinking about e-bikes and cargo bikes and kids and anything we can do in order to make that also part of the priority would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Silverstein. Commissioner Farrak.
Thank you. Many of the thoughts and questions I had have been asked and answered and expressed, so I'll keep my comments relatively short. I agree with lots of points made across the dais. I guess, given where we're at with some specific things, before I give kind of my overall opinion, by the way, you do not have to stay silent. Yeah, you could have sat down 20 minutes ago.
The applicant here is, I think, essentially to comment on the point.
Oh, no, you don't need, we'll call you up if you want to. Yeah, thanks. But maybe you can ask him to come up later, but, yeah, it's a weird format here. You don't get to just kind of... So, Kyle, you look like you're ready.
Only because the folks at home probably couldn't hear that, just to explain there's a dialogue about the applicant being available to answer bike parking questions in response to Commissioner Silverstein. The second half of that wasn't audible for those not in the room, so I just want to make that note, and also for our minutes taker who's not in the room. She'll appreciate that.
Got it. So, because it sounds like, at the very minimum, we have an opportunity to suggest some things that could improve the project based on our implementation of our policies, one thing we often do, because of privacy concerns with neighbors in many development and home remodels, et cetera, around the city, is to suggest adding elements that help with privacy screening. And one that comes to mind pretty obviously with this project is the top floor, which, by the way, I think, you know, you can fit eight units in in three stories, not four, but since we may not be able to go there, that top floor, four of six windows on the east side, which is the closest side to residential neighbors, are bathroom windows. So I would love to see privacy glass, obscured glass in those windows, as well as a higher sill height in the bedroom windows that are on that side. The second and third floors have two bathrooms, respectively, same side. Would love to see those to added privacy. And then, you know, just, again, I would love to see this project, I was excited when I saw it. I want housing, a lot of great reasons expressed by Commissioners Silverstein and Eric that I agree with. The location's great for it. I like the, I actually kind of like the general design, but concur that there is, you know, and so eight units, to me, you know, it's very clear, it was expressed before by some other people, you can get that without adding that fourth story. So I just don't see the necessity there, and I do think it causes this, it drives up the perception that more parking is necessary, that more carbon is, you know, the concrete and paving percentages goes up unnecessarily. So, to me, the, it's, you know, those are all very mitigatable. And then, you know, as opposed... And then, you know, as opposed to the, I commend everyone for coming out, but I'm disappointed, honestly, that this project was kind of approached with an adversarial nature. Like, hopefully, you'll find neighbors or could have found neighbors to come and support it. There's an active group of people that are very supportive of housing, and it's kind of disappointing to be in a position where it feels like, it's kind of like you're forcing us rather than making it a celebration of a project that could have been a good thing. And now, so it's just this weird space to be in, where I want more housing, particularly in this area. I see a lot of merit to the project. It could be improved, and I don't know why you're, you know, not reducing the parking, not adding more landscaping. And I do hope that we can find a way, as a commission, to require some added privacy screening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm particularly appreciative of the last two speakers and the constructive observations that they're offering. I believe I will have a similar one. First, I wanted to verify, if I may, to staff, that we are voting tonight on a use permit and a recommendation to council. Is that correct?
Correct. The two actions would be action on the use permit, architectural control and BMR agreement, and then a recommendation to city council on the tentative map.
Okay, thank you. So, we've, I think, well analyzed much of the use permit. We haven't spent a lot of time on architectural review for that reason. And I have really only one main problem with this project. I mean, some things are academic, providing a very dominant, modern structure in an environment that has rather little modern, especially immediately adjacent. But if we're going to accept height and glass railings and so forth, the only aesthetic real problem that I have is the rather extreme imbalance of the upper three stories sitting on a lower story that is about 30% undercut on one side. It looks like something that would be terribly clever in Toronto or Berlin, but is not really compatible with this area. And in this case, I would like to ask if the architects would consider a facade arch, arch not in terms of arc, but in terms of a, whatever it is, 16-foot-high post on the left, post, better to say panel, with a flying beam above it that would continue the aesthetic of the first floor and provide a visual basis for support of the upper floors. And may I note that that's just an initial design concept, but the purpose would be to provide some architectural stability, I think that's the word to use, to visually support the upper floors. And as part of making the architectural review finding, I would recommend combining that with the suggested adjustment to windows for privacy and with the bike parking, which I think, though not directly aesthetic, is something that would be a mitigation of what I have to agree would be a very visible problem. And I'll just take a note, take a moment to point out the irony of the state laws that in some cases have just been imposed on Menlo Park, but in some cases have actually been generated here in Menlo Park, including deleting a requirement for parking, particularly with this adjacency to the train. One can easily forget that if the train station is half a mile away, you can walk. But when you get off the train at Fourth and Townsend and you have to go to Market Street, it's a mile walk. And I used to just bring my bike on the train. And we frequently have to fight to keep trains with bike cars. So, I don't think we should underestimate the importance in this transit-starved corridor of the bike parking. So, that's my contribution. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. I think, given that the applicant has indicated an opportunity, would like to take an opportunity to respond to the bike parking, I think it's appropriate to put forth a question about bike parking. The question that has been raised about changes to window glass, as well as, I think, sill height, as it regards to privacy on the third and fourth floor. And then, the question that has been posed about a facade arch.
Okay, I'm not the, I'm going to defer to my experts on the sill height, but specifically the architect, Anthony. But on the bike parking, and I really appreciate all the discussion that you have been having, because these are discussions that we have had as well, especially around parking and bike parking. I know Hoover Street, it does get very crowded during the day with parking. It is very limited parking on the street. We don't want to have people park on the street. And that was kind of our first priority, which is why we had a couple extra parking spots. But with the thought, I'm also very cognizant, I want people riding bikes, I want people walking to downtown, I want people walking where they can, because I walk. I walk downtown all the time. This is part of the reason I love Menlo Park. So, with each parking spot, and it's not drawing in the designs as clear, but you've got a little wall in the back of each parking spot, that in our minds, we would be able to hang bike parking on that wall. So, each spot could have its own bike parking there. That's, that's conceptually what we've talked about and built in. It's just because that's, you know, just a, something a harness you'd buy on Amazon, and you put it up there, once the wall's in there, it's not in the drawings or the conceptual designs. But it is something we absolutely thought about. We will definitely be able to offer the, those living there, the opportunity to park bikes. We're not trying to restrict that in any way. It's certainly needed, especially in this town. So, that was my comment on that.
May I follow up just on that briefly?
Certainly. Commissioner Riggs, as a follow-up question.
Mr. Shepherd. The news reports are not terribly frequent, but they're fairly consistent. Bikes in any open garage or carport are, shall we say, removed at night. And so, the concept of secure bike parking, I think, is what you'll need to look at.
Yeah. That's another reason why we did add the gate in the front now, because the parking structures are all open, so someone could walk, walk down, you know, down the driveway to the parking. We wanted to have that gate. So, that's another reason, I know Hoover gets a lot of foot traffic, and we do have concerns about safety and security. But yeah, certainly, we want to, we want to lock the bikes up too.
Can I quickly follow up to the applicant? So, the application itself states bicycle parking was not a required element of the R3 zoning district prior to the recent zoning amendments, and therefore is not applicable to the project. The proposed project does not include bicycle parking. I totally appreciate that not all bicycle parking is created equal, and that there is easily, potentially, space for that. I have a concern that it's explicitly stated, there's absolutely no bicycle parking. It would alleviate my concerns if that was a formal part of the design process, the approval process, that we're considering this as a viable alternative to people who need to use Caltrain, who want to just go run an errand, particularly for our downtown corridor. That, to me, is part of the reason why we have these restrictions in place today for R3. And I personally consider our traffic scourge to be a public health concern, and to whatever extent we can mitigate that would be excellent.
Yep.
So, building on Commissioner Silverstein's comment, is there a way to incorporate some of the things that you have alluded to into the actual design documents? My understanding is that we probably would be testing some, we would be crossing a legal line if we made it part of our review process, but it sounds like it would go a long way if it were actually part of the design process, to explicitly describe and capture bike parking.
Yes, yes. So, the bike parking, yes, we will put it into the working drawings, the construction documents during the plan check phase. And actually, I would come up here just to say that for the windows that Commissioner Ferick mentioned, yes, definitely for the bathroom windows to provide the privacy, milky glass, we call it the sandblast glass, no problem. As for the bedroom windows, no matter which floor it is on, we have to have at least the certain height restriction because of the window egress. So, we'll just make it higher, but has to be able to, for the fire escape, yes. Yeah, cannot be too high. Right.
Did that address the specific questions/recommendations that you were looking for?
For the windows, some of them. There's the bedrooms that are in the units that are the bedroom, that is the only window, I understand that. But there's also the bedroom where there's a patio and a sliding glass door, and the side window could be raised.
Right. Yes, we can look into that, too.
Thank you.
That means the window next to the door. Yes, yes.
Right.
Sure.
And I believe, sir, while you're there, there was a question addressing the facade arch as it related to sort of the visual overhang of the second, third, and fourth floors above the first floor, the undercut.
I'm sure you have considered that.
Yes, yes, Commissioner Riggs, yes. Very good idea.
And I can predict there's a potential issue from the building department that you, or rather, planning that you might require a variance in order to have that support on the far left. But this would be the right place to ask for it.
Right, right. We definitely can add more beavier support elements to make it look more anchored to the ground, so the upper floor feels more supported, definitely. But we cannot have anything that crosses, I think, Commissioner Riggs, you mean, the structure is underneath the building, right, but not crosses the fire truck path, correct? Nothing overhead?
If it's possible for you to have a support post, column, panel, whatever, further out, that would be great. I had envisioned you needed the full 24 feet at, right at the facade line, in which case, no, you would want a panel overhead. I think maybe a serious conversation with the fire department about whether or not they are, even if they have a ladder truck that goes through there, there is a certain height that they have to hold their truck to, just to get under overpasses. And I don't remember if it's the overpasses or 15-foot-three or whatever, but it's the same essentially as a trailer truck. So, given that your first floor appears to be taller than the other floors, I'm hoping that it can work out visually, that you can have a panel above, or at least the bottom of the panel aligns with your floor height. And then, there's a panel, I'm, of course, drawing, drawing to me, but where we want to support this form, and we only have this much, we'd like to have something over here.
Correct.
Even only at the facade level.
Right. We'll talk to the fire department's responsible person there to see whether they will accept narrowing down that clearance, because right now is the minimum that they have, that's what we were told before.
Width, right.
Width, yes.
Is it Don Johnson you're talking with?
William Saxon.
Oh, right.
Yeah, yeah, right. So, yeah, but I'll go back to William, Mr. Saxon, to discuss about this, to see whether he will accept anything narrower than that.
All right.
It makes our structure easier, too, if he accepts that, because we don't need to cantilever as much.
Well, or at least at the facade, but you should have a lot more, you should have some additional seismic resistance, at least, something.
Correct.
All right, well, very much appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. I'll take a quick moment to address some of my thoughts and a couple of outstanding questions that I have that have not been surfaced. Mine will be specifically just be clarifying questions around the BMR agreement and that process, because I think we haven't quite gone there to that element of the discussion yet. But before I get into the questions about the BMR agreement, I do want to share my support for many of the themes that commissioners have shared about the importance of this project to some of the most essential and highest priorities that this city has, of increasing the housing supply, specifically getting increased housing density, and having housing that is delivering a variety of different unit sizes, a variety of different price points, with a heavy emphasis on affordable housing, and particularly making sure that we get housing in the downtown area and taking advantage of transit corridors. For all of the reasons that other commissioners have mentioned, this is essential for economies, environments, families, and this is strategically aligned, most strategically aligned with the top priorities of the city. There certainly are things that can make it a little bit of, that can make it a challenge. I certainly deeply respect the feedback that we've gotten from the community, folks that are here tonight, folks that have written in about the desire for consistency, the desire for a certain look and feel for safety, for health. But I think that this project, in my opinion, and by my assessment and everything I have read and heard here tonight, meets the bar, to borrow the words that were used earlier, this meets the bar of the kind of thing that we would want to approve. So, with that, I do want to just ask some clarifying questions as it relates to the BMR agreement. There's discussion in the letter and the staff report about units being offered for rent and then eventually being offered for sale. I know that this topic was briefly discussed in, with the Housing Commission, where it first came up. Could you please just give us a little bit more color here tonight about the rent versus buy decision, and what will inform the point at which our unit moves from being, units move from being rented to being offered for sale?
Yes, thank you. This was actually a big bone of contention that was worked out with the Supporting Attorney's Office for the city. But the applicants are not sure whether they're going to sell all of the product or rent all of the product initially, and even though it is being mapped for condominiums. And there's many reasons for that. There's builder liability that attaches for 10 years, there are insurance costs, there's a variety of reasons why the applicant wanted to keep the option open of being able to rent the project initially or sell the housing units. And the city very much wanted to have the housing units be sold, and, but we did not want to have the situation where only one unit is being sold, and that's the affordable unit, thereby creating HOA issues and having that one for sale unit out there with the attendant liability while the other ones remain for rent. So, we negotiated a, an agreement where we would have the BMR unit be rented first, as long as the other units are also rented. At the time that the first unit in the project is sold, a market rate unit is sold to an outside person, then that would trigger the requirement outside person, then that would trigger the requirement to sell the affordable housing unit. But then, we also wanted to protect the existing tenant, so we don't want to be in a situation where, okay, now we've sold one of the market rate housing units, the BMR tenant now needs to leave. And so, in the agreement, it is set forth that when the lease expires by virtue of that tenant deciding to leave the project, then at that point, the unit would be offered for sale. And part of the reason for that is that there is actually different requirements in terms of affordability, if you're doing a for sale project versus a rental project. So, the initial unit is at a low income level, and that might not be, that would not be affordable to them to actually purchase, too. So, that's why we want to make sure that that rental agreement would expire on its own terms, if that makes sense.
Thank you, it does. And that, again, helps clarify the relationship between the market rate and the BMR. So, let me sort of expand on my question. What will determine when the market rate units move from being rentable to being saleable?
That would be at the discretion of the owners.
And is there a timeline based on criteria like interest rates or HOA creation, or any of the number of the other variables you talked about?
No, it really has to do with the feasibility. I think the owners can speak to this. It's probably a practical consideration that if they can retain the units on a rental basis, then they may do that until that 10-year period expires, but if needed to be able to fund the project or to be able to satisfy the financing, then some of the units may be sold, and if that occurs, then the BMR unit would be a for sale unit.
Okay. And my additional question, you talked about the process for ensuring that the tenant of the BMR unit is allowed to complete the entirety of their lease before it would move to a for sale situation.
Right.
What will happen to market rate tenants at the point that the unit is determined to move from being a rentable to being for sale?
I actually have not looked into that specific question about what would happen to the market rate tenants, but I would say that at the time, if the project is rented to any market rate tenants, we would have to look to what the legal requirements are to be able to, whether it's consistent with state law, with local law, to terminate those leases. So, if it's a just cause situation with the law of the city, then we would have to follow those rules there. So, we will just need to look at whatever the legal requirements are, and then we would follow those.
Okay, so, legal requirements as determined by, you know, city-state as opposed to setting a higher bar for retention, or sort of protecting those particular tenants, whether they are market rate or BMR?
Yes, yes.
I think those were my specific questions about the BMR agreement. So, I will look back to other commissioners. Commissioner Barnes, do you have additional, more questions, comments?
Yes, thank you. So, as I break this down, I see four, four component pieces. You know, we start with the state density bonus law. You can have a seat. Thank you. Grab some water if you'd like as well.
Thank you.
You know, that's settled law, that's, it's a waiver system. You know, someone who's availing themselves of that is entitled to unlimited waivers. Staff has weighed in, look, they passed a reasonableness test, and that works for me. The BMR agreement, as written and negotiated, works for me. The architectural control in reading that, you know, it's careful to articulate, you know, not, do you have a problem with the height, but basically, it goes through and articulates, you know, is it, hold on a second, it's a general appearance in the structure in keeping with the character of neighborhood in questions like that. And I think the architectural elements of this project are fine. I think it's an innovative-looking building for the parcel that it's on, but that brings me to the last piece here, and this is how I view it. The applicant chose to bring a parcel where the required width is 80 feet for this, and this particular parcel is 54 feet in width, which is a reduction of some 32-ish percent. And that's why we're here, in a sense, because we're talking about the use permit component of this, because if it wasn't substandard, we wouldn't be having this conversation. So, that's where, for me at least, I can't have it both ways. Like, I am willing to, it's above my pay grade to pass laws at the state level, and I don't, well, let me back up. I don't see this as a pro-housing, not a pro-housing discussion. I think that's very reductive, for me at least, about this particular issue. I think housing, we just went through a housing element discussion where we did very progressive things on density, on heights, on minimums and maximums and the rest of it. We laid out a very prescriptive model for building in the city. What the applicant has chosen to do is bring a substandard lot forward and say, hey, look, this is 54 feet, is it 54 or 64? 50, right, 54 feet has chosen to bring that forward. And we specifically adopted the housing element to have all these offsetting things so we could get the maximum density in the right way, on the right parcels, in the right locations. But what we're being asked, what I'm being asked is to say, hey, look, forget that, forget all the planning that went on in terms of coming up with a plan that works. We're going to present to, by 30, you know, some odd percent, a substandard lot, and we want you to go ahead and approve that under the veneer of needing more housing, because we do need more housing, we know where we need it to be, we've adopted a plan for that. So, for me, it comes down to, at some point, there's a tipping point where, if I'm going to play by all the rules and support all the policies and procedures and development standards we have in place, this, for me, is very tough to get my mind around, because it's a discretionary approval, where the applicant has brought forward something which simply doesn't conform. And there's a reason why, you know, the reason why is the paving issue. The paving issue would not exist if it was a wider lot. So, some of these, excuse me, some of the issues that we're talking about are self-created. Some of the, so, that's the, you know, that's from a very practical sense, some of the sense in the neighborhood of, you know, does it fit the character? Well, it fits a lot better on an 80-foot lot with, and then on a 54-foot lot. So, I look at it as we have something in place, we spent a lot of time developing it, and, you know, does this project deserve special dispensation under the veneer of needing more housing? Yes, we need more housing, but this may not be the right lot for it. And I think there needs to be some type of, so, I don't want to be redundant. So, that's how I look at this. We wouldn't, I wouldn't be here, we wouldn't be here if this was a conforming lot, but we are here, and does it pass the muster for that? And I have a difficult time with that, I'm not saying how I'm going to vote, but I have a difficult time for that. So, for that reason, as we go down the path of this, I'm going to ask that we pull it apart, right, because we've got architectural control, and we've got BMR, and we've got use permit, and I would like to have the ability to vote yes or no on each one of these individually, because I may have a problem with one, but not with the other. So, that's how I view this whole discussion this evening, and how I contextualize what we've been talking about. Thank you.
Can I ask Commissioner Barnes a question?
Oh, I was going to do.
I'm sorry, you were going to ask a process question?
No, I have a question to Commissioner Barnes about what he just said.
Okay. Let me very quickly, I'd like to just, since the question is fresh in all of our minds as Commissioner Barnes has stated it, if the Commission wanted to vote on the individual components that are currently in the first resolution, so the use permit, the architectural control, and the BMR agreement independently, is that something that could be done tonight, or would it require redrafting and a continuation?
I'll start from the staff perspective. So, there is a linkage between those three entitlements or actions, and so, I think splitting them apart is difficult. You know, I understand where Commissioner Barnes is going and appreciate the thought process there. I think, in this instance, they are interrelated, and there's a reason why those actions are all bundled together, they are the adjudicative actions. Those sets of entitlements are necessary for the project to potentially move forward or not move forward one way or another. The map is independent, because the project, if it was to be adopted favorably tonight by the Commission, could move forward with the use permit, architectural control, and BMR agreement in place, whereas the map is an additional item that doesn't preclude the development of building or proposal with the number of units, density, intensity, and the current design. So, I think, with all that being said, those should stay linked. Once again, the second resolution would be for the map, and staff does recommend that approach.
Thank you for clarifying that. Commissioner Silverstein, did you have something that you wanted to sort of address?
Yeah, so, it was, you know, brought up by Commissioner Barnes that we spent a lot of time thinking about our zoning throughout 2023, and we passed our elements, and we said this is exactly what we want, and this specific project violates that. And my question to Commissioner Barnes, just on the framework in which you're using to evaluate these types of things. Throughout the past many months on the Planning Commission, we have received applications from dozens of permits that violate our substandard lot requirements, either for height requirements or widths or setbacks, because of the fact that they are 50 feet wide and not 80 feet wide. And I understand this is a difference in kind, or at least a difference in scale, to a single-family home that wants to build two stories, but we went through all of those zoning kind of evaluations throughout 2023, and we didn't change the nature of our substandard lot for any of those other things that we voted unanimously on. And so, I'm curious as to how you differentiate the kind of, the framework or the philosophy behind this is substandard and therefore no, versus other things being substandard and therefore yes, and if you have any kind of perspective on that, to, you know, help me figure out my opinion as well. Thank you.
Sure, and it's kind of a dicey road to go and do a back and forth amongst commissioners. That said, though, I'm happy to, if it's permissible for the chair.
Please.
Give my two cents on it. First of all, I wouldn't assume that you remember how I voted on those that were substandard, right? So, I'm not saying I voted against them, but I leave, so I may or may not have voted against them based on the fact, wait, let me back up. Your question was, something is, so, say again the issue with the substandard.
The fact that this lot is 50 feet wide.
Yep.
And therefore, substandard, seems to be a concern of yours.
Yep.
There are other proposals that we have voted on as a commission, which have also been substandard, that were not a concern of yours.
Right, okay, thank you for that. So, residences, generally speaking, it happens in single-family homes, is they come because they're substandard, right? So, they may be 65 feet, and they may be 63 feet, so bam, they have to come towards us. I can't control that, right? So, they're coming because they need a use permit because they're substandard. The degree of difference, so, the question that was asked to me in those circumstances when I go to approve it is, yes, they're substandard, are we going to give them a use permit? The structure as proposed, I may have an issue with that, I generally don't, but if I had an issue with what was being proposed from a development standard, I would vote against that particular project. I don't control whether it's substandard or not. What I do control is, what I can control is my vote on the project, right? And for me, it's, I live on a substandard lot. I mean, I'm under 7,000 square feet, and I'm a 5,000-square-foot lot, so it's endemic to the city. I think it's like 40% of the lots are substandard. And then, it becomes a matter of degree. This is material, in my perspective. This is a 30%, 32% difference, and the boundaries are being stretched, which is, as long as it's per code, or, excuse me, per what's codified in settled law for waivers, it's one thing. They've gone and done what they've done, and they've done it on a materially smaller lot, so those two things crashing against each other, they've asked for a special dispensation on this, to do what they want to do on a lot that is materially, I mean, we're talking 30%. So, for me, that is a, that becomes a benchmark for a material difference. A material difference that's hard for me to get over. So, that's how I look at it. And it's, you know, everything's a matter of scope and scale, and for me, that's a big scope and scale difference. So, that's why, and I think that's why some of the, I'll stop editorializing, but I think that's why some of the folks are like, holy crap, what is this thing? Because it's more narrow than we usually see. So, that's my response. Thank you.
Commissioner Farrak?
Thank you. Just to kind of add, Commissioner Barnes, in response to Commissioner Silverstein, one thing I look at, because I can see why you're raising this maybe perceived inconsistency with how we create applications from substandard lots, which are almost everything we see, one thing I find incredibly helpful that helps me understand the relativity is whether the development as proposed is bringing into conformance other issues like front setback, height, side setbacks, all the things on that very nicely completed chart that the Community Development Staff person in charge of that project provides, helps kind of evaluate whether actually this project is helping bring this into what we do want to see, you know? And so, this project is not, but they could get there by, you know, the first three stories fit just under that neat 40-foot level, so if they got rid of that fourth story, it would be within the height limit, it could then reduce the paving, I'd be more than happy to support it. I think eight units is appropriate for this site because of all the reasons that we've been discussing earlier. I actually like, kind of, you know, it looks like a boat. The design is, you know, not very much compatible with the neighborhood, but I still like it. It's just that it's so out of scale to what should be there from what we've decided, all the work that's done, and so, that's, you know, I hope that kind of both responds, but reiterates kind of, you know, it's, as Commissioner Barnes also said, it's not housing or not housing, I'm supportive of the eight units, and they would fit here in 40-feet heights. You know, making some concessions for some other things that are more reasonable, and helping reduce black pavement that is causing heat in our communities to rise would also be appreciated.
I'll take the opportunity to build on something that Commissioner Farrak said. You know, I think the, I believe her words were something along the lines of more of what we want to see, right? And in reference to the direction of projects that are sometime, that are presented, single-family homes and non-compliant lots. In this case, I do believe that the overall project on the non-compliant lot moves forward the types of things that we want to see. It's moving forward on perhaps not an exact numeric compliance, it's moving forward on concepts, and I do think that that matters. I also think that the number I am focused on tends, is, I'm trying to use the word variance inappropriately here, the difference between the city's numericals, for example, for FAR, and what's been asked for here. The, yes, it's, that's, the permissible .7, right, versus point, I believe it's even .77, not even, I'm not going to round to .8, it's .77, like... Like it's just, it's close. It's 896-ish square feet, right? And it's, in my mind, close.
Can I weigh in on that?
Certainly. I think that this is a point where we are discussing and weighing in and trying to understand where the commission is coming out. You know, and I think in the near, very near future, we're going to sort of either take a vote or make a resolution, make a, sorry, make a recommendation and figure out how we proceed. So please.
I don't disagree with that remarkably because it's all achievable. If they got rid of half the parking and brought the height down, they would still get point seven seven same size units. But this insistence on this parking is what's driving the problem, in my opinion.
Can I respond? As a parent of three kids, more of what I like to see is also units with three bedrooms. And I know that there is a tendency for us to have single family homes that accommodate families and then condos and apartments that accommodate single young tech workers or people who don't necessarily have families. And being able to merge those structures within neighborhoods, within structures, within buildings is nice. And I know that there was a project last year that was approved to develop a number of townhomes that were also going to be three bedrooms. And again, as someone who has, needs at least three bedrooms, that to me is one of the reasons why it would be a detriment to knock off the top floor and limit the number of unit, or and keep the same number of units, but have them just be smaller and be catered toward a different demographic.
I can't resist.
Commissioner Riggs.
I'll try to be brief because I know it's getting late. I'll just point out to Commissioner Silverstein that I believed for some time that, for example, every child needs to have its own bedroom, has to have its own desk for homework within that bedroom. There had to be multiple bathrooms in every residence. And then I started volunteering for Habitat for Humanity and getting an idea of the fact that our upper middle class culture may define what we want, but in many cases, it's not only more than what others, particularly joining our neighborhoods from other areas want, it's actually excessive to them, to the point that they would rent out one of the rooms in spite of having enough children. So that, this is a subject worth at least one beer on another evening. I did want to just restate the irony of the parking here, where parking is being provided actually above and beyond what a standard might be. And yet the state went to some trouble to remove the burden of parking. And in many of our discussions here from this desk, we have encouraged project sponsors to reduce the amount of parking that they bring forward. So I will support this project in a functional and legal sense, largely because there are state laws that tell me that I must and how I must. But I wouldn't want it misinterpreted by the residents and the people that I supposedly represent, who don't necessarily agree with state law, who wouldn't want them to think that I agree with state law. I will be supporting this because I have to.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Commissioner Eric.
Given the hour, I think I would like to try and construct a motion that we can start to talk about.
I think that would be great.
Okay.
I think there have been a number of folks who have indicated their level of support, but I have also heard a number of things that I will look to staff, but I believe fall within the level of discretion that the Planning Commission has the right to ask for and that have seemed to have been received by the applicant in a favorable way. So there was a discussion about including bike parking in the design plans. There was a discussion about windows on the third and fourth floor and increasing privacy. I think we've got a combination of opaque glass in bathrooms, looking at raising sill heights insofar as they can still be, allow for egress. And while not a commitment to, I'm not going to claim I understood the whole facade arch discussion, but to look into that as something that potentially visually lightens the profile of the building. So I heard those as at least three things that were of interest to the Planning Commission. But when a specific question to staff, are those within the parameters of things that this commission could ask for and still be, still adhere to the letter of the resolution as it's been drafted?
If they're related to one of the findings in the resolution, and as long as we are not, you know, applicant's amenable and we're not physically precluding, which includes sometimes the financial feasibility of the project, as long as we've really grounded in the findings and the resolution, we could allow these conditions, yes.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I just wanted to get, seek that information and that feedback before we moved into potentially a resolution.
Thank you. That was very helpful. I'm happy to give it a shot.
Please, Commissioner Eric.
I would like to move that we first approve the use permit, the architectural control and the below market rate housing agreement with the conditions or recommendations, whichever one is better. I'll look to staff on that. That the applicant include sufficient and explicit bike parking for the development, that the applicant address privacy in third and fourth story windows via sill heights and opaque materials, and that the applicant take into consideration points on the facade arch made by this commission.
Can I be very explicit with?
I was going to say, I think it would be much better to have more explicit and specific. So the privacy with the sill heights, the opaque materials, that's probably closer to what, I mean, we, but for parking, I would ask a little more specificity. And that the arch situation, I might ask for more specificity there. Kyle, please.
Yeah, maybe if I can start and then turn over to Mr. Turner. So first off, on sill heights, I think a numerical minimum might be appropriate as well here versus just increase the sill heights as a little open ended and subjective. Regarding the arch, I think we follow, I'll turn to Chris for the details, but a couple of considerations. In addition to access for the fire district that was talked about at length, there are also transportation division requirements of the city in terms of access. And I believe the kind of vertical element that Commissioner Riggs is looking for might encroach into the minimum driveway width. So there might be some other access issues, not just from the fire district, but also from the city's public works team. So if that is added, I think there needs to be flexibility based on input from the fire district and the transportation division. So just going to plant that and then I'll turn over to Mr. Turner here if there's any other things.
Yeah, sorry. I just want to clarify, I'm happy to entertain specifics. I was operating under the assumption that we couldn't give specific conditions because of the specifics of state law. So I was operating under a motion that would strongly recommend these things, but not require them. But if we are allowed to require specifics, then I'm happy to entertain that.
And just based on the conversation at this point, Commissioner Eric, to your, to your proposal, I think the facade arc would be a recommendation, not a requirement. I think we would, there has been enough discussion that the inclusion of bike parking plans be written into the design as, like be written into the plans would be a required, could be a requirement.
My suggestion, and it's open to the commission, for that specifically would be to adhere to what Menlo Park zoning today requires for R3 bicycle storage, with the understanding that technically, because this project was provisionally, that the permit was, or the application was provisionally submitted before the requirement was in place, that it may or may not be officially required. That's, that would be my recommendation for the amount of bicycle parking that is sufficient.
So you've, you've defined a recommended, recommended amount of bicycle parking? And then there is the question of what, how that is incorporated into the design and documented and?
If I may, so that particular recommendation is going to be problematic with regard to state law under Senate Bill S330, SB 330. That does preclude the city from enforcing a requirement that is not in effect at the time of the preliminary application, as Mr. Turner mentioned previously. What staff believes could be acceptable here is something along the lines of incorporate an additional or a single or two bicycle parking spaces on, in the garage spaces for each unit, something like that could be added based on the health and safety component, but not the SB 330.
Yes. I do not want this project to be required as per our current zoning. I want this project to add bicycle parking. And I think a reasonable heuristic is what we've already kind of agreed on as being reasonable for these types of projects, which has been outlined, even though it's not directly connected. I just think that's a reasonable amount. And it specifically says that minimal bicycle parking would be one and a half spots per unit and additional 10% for guests. And how the project then incorporates that, whether or not there's room within the current parking spaces, or whether or not a single parking space needs to be dedicated to bike storage or a bike rack for visitors is subject to discretion.
So Mr. Pradat, without referencing current zoning, what is the mechanism, if any, for requiring an element of bike parking?
So let me, let's see. So with regard to requiring bicycle parking, you know, looking at the use permit findings regarding health, health, safety and welfare, I think there have been discussions through this evening with the commission about the importance of bike parking on overall health and safety, or health more so, and overall welfare. I think there can be a connection there with the use permit. As long as the provision of the parking doesn't require a redesign of the project, I think if it's incorporated into the project, there have been manners that were discussed here that the applicant could work within, that that seems reasonable in terms of that litmus test. I'm obviously not an attorney, but from a practical matter, from a planning perspective, that does seem reasonable.
That's exactly what I was going to say. So I think page 93 of the, well, it's of the staff report total, you know, it could be related to the subsection D of the CUP findings, which is the first finding. I would also just, you know, we want to make sure that whatever is required isn't going to make the project financially not feasible. So I would just find a workable minimum that everyone agrees on. And it seemed like, you know, if the applicant's amenable to it.
This, this seems like an opportunity, a moment to pause for any feedback that the applicant feels comfortable giving as regards to bike parking.
I think we can make it financially viable to add some bicycle parking. That seems reasonable. Yeah, I was, I was talking with Anthony and we've got some, either removing a parking space or visually showing the bicycle parking in each, each parking spot is totally fine with us. I'm very, like I said earlier, I'm supportive of this. So yeah, whatever you want to put in is good with us.
Thank you. Appreciate the feedback and the, on the fly discussions. So Commissioner Eric, to get the first of your modifications to be more specific, do you have wording in mind based on everything you've just heard? So to?
I think my wording would be ask, or ask the applicant to include bicycle parking as, or adjacent to, or next to, or part of existing parking already included in the plan in order to accord with the health and safety findings.
And based on?
I see our attorney nodding.
Feedback. I think the, the desire is for more specificity wherever possible. So I think the number of one or two or 1.5 bike parking, not 12. The answer is not 12.
I'm not doing so well.
So through the chair, I think in this case, probably the specificity of the location is appropriate. I think from a staff perspective, we're okay with not having the number of parking spaces for bicycles, but the location identified either within or adjacent to the existing or currently proposed parking, I think solves that concern about the subjectivity.
Thank you for that feedback, that that's, that's an appropriate level of specificity.
Sorry, point of clarity. Why wouldn't the number of bike, I mean, if they, if we say you need one bike, or if you need, if we say specify a location and the applicant comes back with a single bicycle parking spot, that wouldn't necessarily satisfy. So I'm curious why, like why wouldn't we prescribe a minimum that would satisfy our public health concerns? Not necessarily a maximum, but given that we want to promote active transportation, we could decide a public health minimum in order to promote biking for the residents of this to be built to development.
You can if you want to, as long as it's, you know, reasonable and financially feasible and the applicant has expressed that they're willing to meet whatever is reasonable and financially feasible. So you can set a minimum if you would like.
Commissioner Eric, not to put you on the spot, but as you are proposing the modifications to the resolution, we've heard about location and the possibility of account.
I think I would propose a minimum of one bike parking spot included with each existing parking spot in the plan.
And that was in the vicinity of the current parking?
Correct.
Right? Just to address that. Okay.
So I think we're, overall, we're looking at three things. We're looking at bike parking, I think we've got that one. We were looking at the facade arch or arc, which I agree with Vice Chair Schindler, probably needs to be in the form of a recommendation rather than specifics, given the public works and other city concerns. So I'll leave that as a recommendation for the applicant to consider. And then the last one was window height and opaque materials. I think I would like to ask the applicant to weigh in on here as well, if they have thoughts on what they're comfortable with.
Right. So, and I think, I believe per my notes, it's opaque glass in bathrooms, which we got some feedback on.
Right.
And as being acceptable, if I recall, if my notes are correct.
Glass in the bathrooms, not in the bedrooms.
Yes, and in the bathrooms. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And in bedrooms, there was a, I believe, Commissioner Farrak, please correct me if I've got this, the request to look at sill heights at, that they're currently at 36 inches, if I recall correctly? So was the, what was, what was the?
Fire department height, I think, is 34. Yeah, 30, yeah, right. Three foot six inches, three foot.
That would be 40.
A little more than three foot. Yeah, yeah.
So I, yeah, so it was the, where it's, yeah, to the sill height. So, I, yeah, so it was the, where it's, yeah, to the sill height, that's the, just to the requirement on those, that that's the only ingress egress window, but on those units that have the outdoor patio ingress egress even higher, so that, that there's not a view angle from those units down to those apartments next door.
May I suggest a criteria?
Five feet.
Well, I'd love to do that, but except going window by window, that's hard to do. So I was going to say obscure glass below 3 foot.
Oh yeah, could do that, yeah.
Sure.
Obscure glass below 3 feet.
Below 3 foot. So you can get the light, but not have the privacy issue.
Well, the ones that I'm suggesting be raised are those bedrooms that have a lot of light, because they have the north, or south orientation of full glass with the patio doors, you know, they have the decks out there. So that's not an issue in those two rooms. In the, the ones that are, the bedroom of those high up units that are, that's the only, that's the only window, that's where I would say, just to the requirements of the code, because I, and, you know, obviously, we have to for health and safety reasons.
But sometimes raising the sill that high will affect the livability of the unit. I mean, it doesn't look as good, number one. It changes the character of the architecture, and Mr. Riggs understands, because he's an architect. It changes the style of the building. And also, if the privacy is the issue, I think using the sandblasted glass below 3 foot would solve the issue.
Okay, I just think it looks, windows look strange when they're cut with clear and sand, you know, like, that to me is an architectural issue, more so than a, a window that's a little higher up. But, you know, obviously, this is-
It's, it's better of the two, yeah.
Yeah. I guess then the direction would maybe be to increase privacy screening, including obscured glass on restroom windows, and, you know, minimum, the heights that would match the code requirements for bedroom windows, or higher, if possible. So I'll leave that to, like, your-
So obscure glass below what number of inches?
Well, if, I was thinking it's just to the fire department code is where the, the lowest sill would be, but the, I, I mean, I, if they want to do the obscured glass below that, I guess that's a style choice. I just think I wouldn't want to require that, because that looks, that to me is a very odd pane of glass that's split.
I, I think, given the architect's involvement, and, and the kind of work that's been done so far, that the architect isn't going to apply a film up to 36 inches on an otherwise eight-foot piece of glass. There's going to be a mullion, a muntin, whatever.
Okay. Oh, well, that would work, yeah. Yeah, fair enough.
It would be a different piece of glass, so it's a clear cut.
And then a, yeah, like a mullion or something?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, that's fine, great.
Right. And may I bring back that issue about the bike? I want Mr. Turner to know that one possibility of putting the bike, it's not a secured bike, it's, but it's open bike rack, like inverted U-shaped bike racks. We can use the 13th spot, which is the open parking area. If we don't put lockers, then it should not violate any setback requirements, and should, so they'll be just on the ground. And we can put in, like, four or five of them, because we have a length of 20 foot. So we can put in probably four inverted U-shaped, that would give you eight bikes. So one bike per unit.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, if I, just to answer that question, it'd be fine as far as the setbacks go without, if, if they're just like bike racks.
Bike racks, yep. No setback issue, and we can give one bike parking space per unit.
To the privacy point, I apologize, not being an architect myself, I did not follow. So I would ask help from my fellow commissioners to articulate the language that we would like.
I might ask Commissioner Riggs to re-articulate it, just because I'm sure I won't say the right terms.
Just to, for windows for which the sill height is less than 36 inches, then the glass that's below the 36-inch line should be obscure glass, meaning textured, any glass that prevents a clear image from being transmitted.
That works for me, if it works for staff.
Just a quick clarification, would this be for all windows? I know we kind of talked about specifically certain windows and certain bedrooms.
Side elevation.
Yeah, it's the side elevation that's got the close residential frontage, I think it's east, but- The right side. Yeah. All windows on the right side. Yeah, yeah, well, at least second floor and up, but I don't-
I think we talked about third and fourth.
Yeah, we had talked about third and fourth, I just know the neighbors that express concern, and those are set to one and two stories, so I defer to-
So I, I think we're looking for-
Yeah.
Fully obscure glass on bathroom windows on the third and fourth floor, and for all other windows on the third and fourth floor, textured or somewhat opaque glass below 36 inches.
And are we excluding the second floor? Because we usually include the second floor.
Yeah, I would like to include it, it's just, I think Commissioner Eric was referring to, original comment was made specifically on third and fourth, but second is just as impactful.
And where we, we were specifying which face of the building could be?
Yes, on the east face, and I'm happy to include the second floor as well.
And there's no concern for the west face?
Well, there's a giant asphalt parking lot between those windows and the next house over, so I think that has a lot more space.
Okay.
Commissioner Riggs, are you in a position to offer, like, a one or two-sentence vocabulary description of consider, excuse me, consideration of the facade arch that would encapsulate what we talked about in a simple and easy-to-document way?
I am, thank you. And this is based on the relatively positive reaction from the architect tonight. I do think we need to require a visual response to the issue, a mitigation for the apparent, the visual lack of support of the upper floors. And the architect, I believe, had something in mind that would not span the driveway, but I would like to suggest that spanning the driveway be looked at as well. There's actually a, well, there's more than one precedent for that concept, and in, of course, Spanish architecture, and there have been modern interpretations of it that are actually rather successful. So I would like to leave it up to the architect to determine what can be done. I'm not as concerned about engineering asking, asking for a narrower, or, or a wider driveway entrance than the fire department. I don't think anybody asks for anything wider than the fire department. They, they win that award every year. But I do recognize that a panel all the way over at the property line could be a challenge. So I'd like to leave it in some way up to the architect, as long as it provides an, an architectural response to the visual issue. I don't want to suggest another hearing. I don't think that's in the benefit of the applicant, and it's, I don't see how it's in the benefit of the city. So, Mr. Prada, I'm going to do something that was actually suggested by one of our speakers tonight, and I'm going to challenge staff to find a way to make this requirement, help us word a requirement that would not require another hearing.
I'm not comfortable making that requirement as part of this motion. I'm comfortable with that as a suggestion, but not a requirement to change the facade of the building. I don't think that's strictly necessary, while I totally appreciate the architectural concerns as a, as a recommendation. I, I don't think we should say that if you don't do this, then we wouldn't approve it.
I can understand that. I have to share that it would be my position, I could not vote for this project with what has been designed, because I don't want to be having coffee at Barone and having a series of people come over and say, "When your second-to-last meeting, Riggs, you approved that piece? Are you serious? Can I take your picture with it?" So, no, I, I, I can't. I, I think it's going to be much easier for others to judge once it's built. I should say, I fear that it will be much easier for other people to judge once it's So I'm doing my best to give some flexibility, such that the architect has a response, again noting that he actually seemed to have an initial response in his mind when he stepped up to the microphone. And, and so I'm not being overly specific, because I don't think it's ever appropriate for someone from Adias to say, "I'd really like it if you changed the two windows into three." So, so that's where I am at, just trying to fulfill that duty.
It seems, it seems like a large ask, I think, at this point, it, to, but I think it's valid to ask staff, is there a way to phrase a very nonspecific, like, a, a requirement without specifics? And to give flexibility on the nature of the execution, but to put out a goal.
So that's, I wanted to clarify exactly what, what the ask is here. So are we, and you guys can jump in, because this is maybe a planning, but is our, is the request here that the facade is changed on the discretion of the architect? Like, however the architect might decide what is-
If I may attempt in, in, in complete layman's terms here, right?
Right.
That the facade is changed in order to mitigate the visual appearance of-
Height.
-overhang tipping, just off balance.
Just first ground floor only, right?
Between, difference between the ground floor, right, versus 2, 3, 4.
And could I add, I'm so bold as to ask this, because it is not a significant change to the massing or design of the building, it's just the facade, and it's just at the first level. So I would even be so bold as to say, it would, this should not be at the level of financial feasibility of the project. I mean, if it is, I'll join the, I'll join the applicant in a future hearing and ask to be, ask for the traffic impact fee to be waived, if we want to talk about financial feasibility.
So there's a couple of things here. So there are some constraints to a couple of the architectural ideas that were identified now that we, as staff, have not evaluated in detail, and we've talked about already in terms of fire district access, but also Transportation Division requirements for vehicles making those turning movements into the spaces. The last one is regarding setbacks of the structure. So as this is attached to the structure, it probably, it can't extend, unfortunately, Commissioner Riggs, beyond or over the, the drive aisle. That's going to put the structure into the required side yard.
What, what's our availability of variance? Is it half the setback?
It's 50%. It's also non-agendized component of the project, so it would need to be recommended, continued. The applicant would have to come back with a proposal. The variance findings would have to be justified by the applicant. That, that's likely not a feasible approach to this. But all that being said, we can certainly, if the commission's interested in adding flexibility about a potential kind of vertical element, or, or kind of arch framing element, or some sort of wing wall, that does comply with Transportation and Fire District, that the planning staff can review and, and approve it as part of a building permit, that that would be generally reasonable. But it would have to offer flexibility if staff determines that it's not feasible from a zoning and planning and fire code, building code compliance. Feasible, not the financial feasible here, but, but really about city rules, regulations, as well as its interaction with the fire district. Does that help?
It does help, and it's not only realistic, but it's consistent with our, some previous requests on much smaller projects. So, thank you, I appreciate that.
Does staff need me to propose language on that?
I'm sorry, I was looking for confirmation on my response with our city attorney. Can you repeat the question?
No problem. Do you need me to propose language for the motion, or can you run with what was just agreed to?
Maybe to help move this along, recognizing the hour, and before we, we read back this kind of option, I do want to recognize that the commission has typically ended at 11. If, if we need to continue beyond 11, the, the commission would, would likely want to make that motion. Second, it can, it can kind of be in the realm of this discussion. That being said, the, what I heard from Commissioner Riggs, and for the commission's benefit, would be to, you know, request that the applicant consider incorporating an architectural element, such as like a, a vertical column or arch, I don't want, I think that's not what Commissioner Riggs is meaning, but, but some sort of wing wall, vertical element that extends beyond the existing ground floor at the front to kind of extend towards the upper-level facade, subject to review and approval by the Transportation Division, Fire District, and Planning Division. Does that generally track Commissioner Riggs with our discussion? I think it's the incorporation of a wing, a wing wall or some other vertical element along the front facade, to the extent feasible. I think it needs to include that, to the extent feasible by Transportation, Fire, and Planning, and it, it needs to be clear to the commission that that may not occur in the field.
Understood. I think maybe the adjective significant should be in there, a significant mitigation to the visual imbalance. Because I, it's going to need more than a, a paint stripe, for example. But I got the impression, you know, I keep saying this, and we haven't actually asked the architect to come back to the microphone, if that's appropriate, through the chair.
I think that what I'd love to see if we could do is get to 10 minutes. We are going to need more than 10 minutes. I feel fairly confident to get through a couple of motions, so, given that we have momentarily paused, yes, I think it would be nice to hear just a response from the architect. But before we do that, I'd like to ask if we could please vote on continuation of the meeting until, what's the recommendation from staff? To extend the meeting, excuse me, beyond 11 o'clock, until a target time.
That would be at the prerogative of the commission, and as vice chair, you could set a recommendation.
I'm just going to go, let's, let's say 11:22, because Commissioner Barnes is banging his head on the desk.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, a quick, quick vote. We have a proposal and a motion and a second to extend the meeting to 11:22. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. All right, let's do this, we got 31 minutes. Okay, I, thank you, I think the, the ask was just to, for feedback is to- you. I think the ask was just to, for feedback as to the proposal on the table about the wording for the additional architectural element that significantly mitigates the imbalance between the first floor and the second, third, and fourth floors.
Yeah, so I just want to repeat before we go down this rabbit hole that I'm not comfortable with this as part of the motion. And if other people feel the same way as I do, it might behoove us to take a straw poll. If other people strongly like this and we're going to go down that path, then I'm very happy to, you know, kind of continue down this path.
Thank you. I think, just by way of feedback, is the wording reasonable?
The wording, as staff has mentioned, since we still need the other departments' input to let us to have anything lower than that 14-foot clearance, we can try our best to see whether they approve it or not. But in case if they don't, then, you know, unless we have even more height, but we don't want to do that. So I think the language should be in a way that we, it's not a requirement, but it's maybe to have the applicant work with staff to do their best to increase, to improve the facial aesthetics.
Mr. Prada, I believe your language was commit to incorporate, and with caveats, as long as it was permissible by the other city entities.
So I think our recommendation for language was slightly different. It would be consider adding a visual
Consider.
Element, you know, and I think we heard back from some commissioners, a kind of significant element or substantial element that mitigates the imbalance on the front. I think the way the architect mentioned would be fine. Work with staff, you know, request the applicant work with staff to identify, you know, and then we can kind of repeat what we said. And that would be fine. Once again, it does include that flexibility that, you know, does require the approval of the transportation division, fire district, and also subject to review and determination by planning division staff. So ultimately, Mr. Turner and our staff would identify whether or not, you know, there is a possibility, and it may not be, that it's feasible as the architect mentions.
And may I show a sketch to Commissioner Riggs to make sure that we understand clearly what he is thinking versus what, or I put it on the screen?
So I appreciate the on-the-fly response and the creativity, but I think the spirit of this discussion is that there will, this is, there'll be, there could be multiple iterations, and the commitment is to a process, not to a specific
Okay.
outcome. So while I appreciate that, the offer and, and again, the on-the-fly response, thank you.
Sure.
I think what we're looking for is to include this third criteria in Commissioner Eric's motion that the applicant commits to consider adding the architectural element. Do you have the wording? I got significant mitigation of the imbalance, but I...
Perhaps Mr. Turner can read back a draft.
Please, thank you. That would be great. Mr. Turner, we'd be very appreciative. Yeah, I think, I think, Mr. Turner, can you, can you give us the language as best you have it?
Okay. So this is what we have. The applicant, required that the applicant work with staff to evaluate a vertical element on the front facade to significantly mitigate architectural imbalance to the extent feasible, subject to review and approval by the planning and transportation divisions and the Menlo Park Fire Protection District.
To me, that seems to reflect all the, all the important elements that we have discussed over the last 15 or 20 minutes. I look to Commissioner Riggs for confirmation and to Commissioner Eric for incorporation into his motion.
I'm sorry, Mr. Turner, could you read that again?
Yes. It would be, so require the applicant to work with staff to evaluate a vertical element on the front facade to significantly mitigate the architectural imbalance to the extent feasible to be reviewed, and to be reviewed by the planning and transportation divisions and Menlo Park Fire Protection District.
And you, yeah, you mentioned the visual imbalance. Yes. Thank you.
Through the chair, it's nuanced, but we'll probably rephrase the reviewers by transportation and transportation division and fire district approval, subject to review and determination by the planning division. The planning division will ultimately ensure that it's compliant with those two divisions, and we have the documentation or determine that it's not feasible, and then we'll move forward as is. So just, it's nuanced, but it's important for, for me to identify how that works for the commission and the community this evening. We'll make that adjustment.
Thank you for clarifying.
I would like to incorporate that language into my motion, and I would like to make the motion with all of the language we have worked out with staff to this point.
Great. So we have a motion with an element addressing bike parking, an element addressing obscure glass for the sake of privacy on a specified number of, specified type of window and specified floors, which I'm not going to repeat, and we have an element of architectural facade. And is there clarification?
Yes. Can I just repeat it back? I know we worked through a number of those to kind of specifically define some of those conditions. So the motion would be to adopt the resolution approving these permanent architectural control below market rate housing agreement with the conditions to include a minimum of one bicycle parking unit, bicycle parking space per unit adjacent to or in the, in one of the proposed parking spaces. Two, require obscured glass below three feet for bedroom windows and the totality of bathroom windows on the right side of the structure on all floors. And then the condition we just worked through with the applicant will evaluate the vertical element to the front facade to mitigate the architectural imbalance to the extent feasible, et cetera.
So moved.
Commissioner Farrak?
Thank you. I'm not going to offer a second. Instead, I'm going to ask for a friendly amendment in the form of an addition. I know that there's been expression of concern for the amount of parking and paving, certainly from me, some from others. I'd like to consider, if you would, adding a consideration of a health and safety-related improvement to reduce the heat island effect with permeable pavers that allow for that to become better ground cover than just unpermeable surfaces. So it will help with water drainage, too, in the event of big rains. So keeping the water on site, reduce risk for neighboring properties. So that basically succinctly permeable paving solutions that reduce the heat island effect and ensure proper drainage to reduce impacts to neighbors.
Through the chair, if we could clarify, I do believe the applicant may have had a clarifying question as we read back the motions, or that's not motions, excuse me, the conditions. And so it's up to the chair whether that's appropriate, but I'll just want to flag that.
Please.
Before we do that, if I could clarify the permeable paver component. So is that a recommendation or a requirement? That's the first question.
Well, we haven't even been able, I, unfortunately, it came to me a little late in this game, and I want to make sure because of the rules that were set forth earlier, that the applicant can accept those so that it would actually work. So we haven't discussed it, but I just know that it was a frequently brought-up concern, the amount of parking and thus the amount of paving, and the paving 19% increase in, I can't remember the term, but they're over paving this for what our design standards are.
Yeah, and I'll look to Mr. Turner to clarify the extent of the current permeable pavers that are within the project site. I believe there are some, but I'll look to the applicant or Mr. Turner. One, or a couple of things that would need to be included in that is, once again, subject to review and approval of the transportation division and fire district. Fire district does have weight load requirements for permeable pavers. Sometimes they result in permeable pavers actually becoming more permeable than you think because the compaction requirements for the subgrade, but that's technical. We don't need to get into those details. We can certainly have that looked at if it's amendable by the applicant, but there needs to be this requirement that's reviewed by the transportation and fire district as well as the planning division. We'll use the same language if it's amendable as the condition regarding the visual change to the front facade.
Thank you. I think I'd love to, like to give the applicant an opportunity to add, first, ask a clarifying question, if there was one, about some of the modifications that have been made.
Yes. Mr. Turner, earlier, about five minutes ago, talked about the language on the bike rack. We can do the bike rack only in the 13th spot there, which is at the end of the building, but not next to each parking stall because at the back wall of each parking stall, we have an EV charger, and we cannot block that. So there's a conflict there, and I think EV is just as important these days to, to most people. So we like to keep the EV charger at the back wall, and that is why we suggest using the inverted U-shaped racks at the 13th parking spot at the end of the building. Yeah.
I'm sorry. Is the EV charger in the center of the back wall?
Yes. We want to do the charger, like each charger has two that comes out. So the back wall, as you see on our plans, the back wall is low, it's not very tall, and it's just high enough to get EV charger, and that can feed into two parking spaces.
As, as I recall, the wording suggested by Mr. Turner, the wording allowed for, or there were two possible locations identified in the wording. So my interpretation of that wording is, does not commit to
Okay.
both.
Sure.
In which case, it leaves open in the event that there is another design option found with the wall or using the 13th parking spot. They are both options under Mr. Turner's wording. So
Great.
That, that seems to adhere to the spirit, the spirit of both concepts here.
Just clarification to the applicant. Are you confident that, as per the language of the proposed motion, a minimum of eight bicycle parking spots would fit in that remaining 13th car spot?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak, do you have a specific, just to keep things moving as briskly as possible, a specific question about the permeable pavers or wording that we can, we can put forth for reaction?
Sorry. To, you know, I'd love to know your, you know, architectural solutions or suggestions on what would make sense to help reduce the heat effect and the risk of drainage of water from the property to neighboring properties or the street through a solution. I don't want to propose what that precise solution is, but permeable pavers is certainly an idea. What would you suggest?
Currently, our civil engineers specify perme, pervious pavement, but they are not pavers because some, sometimes the pavers will pop up easily if we let fire truck use that path. So as staff mentioned earlier, upon review by other departments, we'll get to know whether we can use pavers or not. But if I was to suggest it, maybe the color?
Lighter.
That can, yeah, the color can help.
Great.
So I think Mr. Prada's suggestion that we borrow language from the modification about the architectural element and say something along the lines of to consider, to consider alternative paving solutions, subject to review by the same list of city entities.
Yes.
Yeah, that works for me. Does that work for the maker of the motion?
That works for me.
Mr. Turner, is that enough specificity and language to incorporate as a fourth modification?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. So we have a first on the table for the emotion, a motion with, to confirm the resolution for the use permit, architectural control, and PMR agreement with the four stated modifications. We have a first.
Through the vice chair, I believe
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Farrak seconded with the friendly amendment. Did I catch that or no?
No, I just offered a friendly amendment. Thank you.
She specifically, oh, thank you, Commissioner Riggs, seconds. Okay, we have a first and a second. And if there is no further discussion, I think we have exhausted this, I'm going to call for a vote on the resolution to approve the use permit, architectural control, and below-market rate agreement as laid out in the resolution prepared in the staff report with the four modifications that have been captured and discussed. I'm hoping that all commissioners are comfortable with their recollection of what those four modifications are. Good, I'm seeing nods. So with that, I will call the vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you for that. I want to be clear. I am pro-housing, but I do not believe that this is the right project for this site. So based on the use permit, I am going to vote no.
Thank you. Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak?
Based on the unnecessary height because the unnecessary amount of parking is still really causing me a lot of discomfort with this project. That said, I also probably over-index on knowing the need for housing units. So I hope in the future that this unnecessary excessive parking can be used for some good community amenities for this project. I will nonetheless vote yes, despite disappointment in the outreach and the consideration of height and appropriateness for the site.
Commissioner Riggs?
Sort of similar, yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Well, I'm generally supportive of this project. As I stated earlier, I think that our amendment number three, while I know that Commissioner Riggs has the best of intentions, I think is overly prescriptive and unduly burdensome to the applicant. And as a result, I don't think it's appropriate for us to mandate that, and I vote no accordingly.
Thank you. And I am a yes vote. So the motion carries with four yes votes, two no votes, and one absence. Thank you, everybody, for vigorous discussion, deep intellectual perspectives, and staying light. I know, that's, I'm just trying to pump everybody up because we've got one more to go. So in light of all, I think all of the discussions and topics we have covered up until this point are relevant to the second thing we have to consider here, which is whether or not we make a recommendation to city council to approve the tentative subdivision agreement, or proposed map. Thank you. Would any commissioners like to make, have any further, have any further discussion, have any further questions as it relates to the recommendation to city council?
Could I ask a question of the applicant?
Yes.
Great, thanks. I have a question for probably the owner. I'm not exactly sure. Are you, so I think that this is the item that we need to allow it to be
Are you, so I think that this is the item that we need to allow it to be condominiumized and potentially have for sale units, is that right? And so are you planning to bundle parking with units, or have it be unbundled?
Yeah, that's a good question, and you can see, I don't think we had a formal discussion as to getting that far down the road, but with, by asking that question, I would say bundled, because we, we want to have those assigned to the, to the owners of the, of the units. So that's, that's our stance.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. I do not see any further questions or discussions, so we are awaiting a motion as to how the planning commission will recommend, if they will approve the, of the resolution, which is to recommend that the city council approve the tentative subdivision map. That is what's before us.
I move that we approve the resolution to recommend to the city council the tentative subdivision.
We have a first from Commissioner Eric.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Silverstein, and I will go ahead and call for a vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you, no.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. So we have five yeses and one no, and one absence. The motion passes to recommend that city council approve the tentative subdivision map. And with that, I will close the public hearing component of our agenda, an item F2. And Mr. Prada, we, onto informational items. Any updates to provide for, or informational items for the planning commission?
Yes. Thank you, Vice Chair Schindler. So the next planning commission meeting is Monday, April 29th. The planning staff are tracking a single-family home use permit for that agenda, as well as the four development agreement annual reviews for the meta campuses. So that's the original East Campus, the West Campus Building 20, the West Campus Expansion Project, 21, 22, and the Hotel, and then the Willow Village. So it'll be a multi-year annual review for the first three from the East and West campuses, and it'll be the first annual review for the Willow Village. And that concludes my report. So, oh, and I, I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to also recognize that that will be the last meeting for Commissioners Riggs and Barnes. I think I've said that a few times over the last few meetings. I am certainly not trying to drive that point home, but we want to thank you for your years of dedicated service to the city of Menlo Park. I really appreciate the two, two terms this time around. I know there's been multiple other terms for Commissioner Riggs as well, so thank you both for your years of service, and we'll, we'll say our formal goodbyes next, next meeting, but did want to get that on the record this evening as well. And that concludes my reports and announcements. It's time.
Thank you, Mr. Prada. I would just like to essentially plus one and enthusiastically support the appreciation for years of service and wisdom, and we'll have an opportunity to hopefully thank Commissioner Barnes and Commissioner Riggs for their service with more words at an earlier hour in two weeks. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 11:15.
Thank you.